So Roxanne Stevens needs the link re-sent to her, but neither Eva or I have the planned meetings email on our laptops. Would you be able to forward it to her again, please?
Doing it right now.
Thank you.
We'll wait a few minutes for Roxanne to dial in.
Just sent her the link.
Thank you.
Is Seth gonna be joining us on Zoom?
Yes, excuse me, I called the merger. He said that six today did not work.
Okay. Oh, it's too bad.
Hello.
Good evening, David.
Good evening. I'm sorry to be a little late. I just saw I have an email from Roxanne saying she needed the meeting link. Should I send that to her? Did anyone do that already?
Paul just sent it over to her.
Okay.
Has anyone heard from Sal?
Yes, Commissioner Mora should be joining us in person. He did indicate that he would try to log in online prior to coming in. He said he will be in about 10 minutes after 6 o'clock in person, but he would try to log in online in between.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a quorum. I think we should get started.
Can we get started, Paul?
Do you have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Two people?
Oh, Roxanne? Oh, we're waiting for Roxanne. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I believe we have a quorum. Chairperson Hughboy, Commissioner Stevens has joined us.
Okay, thank you. Just a few seconds and we'll begin the meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Hollister Planning Commission meeting. And tonight, we're having a special study session on the general plan recommendation policies. Can I have Pledge of Allegiance? Commissioner Fernandez, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Certainly, Chairperson Hughboy, we will do a roll call. Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Whoops, here.
Thank you. Commissioner Mora?
Here, present.
Thank you. Chairperson Hughboy?
Here.
Thank you. And I will note that Commissioner Munster is absent. He called in earlier and indicated that he had a prior engagement today and would not be able to join us in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Abraham.
You're welcome.
We go into verification of agenda posting, please.
Thank you, Chairperson Hughboy. The agenda for tonight's Planning Commission Special Study Session Meeting was posted outside City Hall on Friday, May 21, 2021, at 4:57 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing item number one, review the draft general plan vision statement and policy recommendations for key unresolved policy issues for the general plan. The draft vision statement and policy recommendations were informed by public and general plan subcommittee feedback through a series of community workshops and general plan subcommittee meetings held over summer of 2020 and spring of 2021. And before we go into the presentation, I just want to give you a little chronology. Here, I did receive the notice of the meeting and got the request of the printouts of the material, read it over the weekend. And since I have announced that I am a member of two committees who are especially taking a vested interest in the general plan, the Public Art Review Committee and the San Benito County Chamber of Commerce Green Committee, I sent the notices out to those organizations. Subsequent to that, I received a phone call from David Early, and he suggested that we highlight eight out of these items. There's a total of, I believe, 28 elements and subcategories, great volume of material to go over here. He thought it would be prudent, and with the consensus of my fellow commissioners, to focus and highlight on these eight items: new school funding, farmland mitigation, sensitive habitat, traffic level of service, growth management, the special planning areas, housing sites, and inclusionary zoning. So if I have the consensus of the commission, we'd like to proceed that way. Are there any comments or objections from my fellow commissioners?
No.
This Commissioner Mora, I don't object.
Objections.
Okay, great. And then I received two emails this afternoon that I'd like to just take a minute to read for the record. And one is from, and I think it was a response to the emails that I sent previously to the Green Committee, and one respondent was, her name is Emily Renzel, and her email states as follows: Dear David, I like the topics you and David Early came up with. I cannot attend the meeting, but I note that the agricultural background report for the last comprehensive plan stated that farms of fewer than 10 acres are not really viable for egg production. Yet, the county has five-acre minimum lot size on most of the prime egg land. Maybe you could consider an ordinance for 10-acre minimum lot size, but allowing one or two five-acre lots to be divided off for estate purposes, and then freezing the larger remaining lot for viable egg production with no further subdivision. It might be very complicated, but with computers, such things could be simplified and tracked, Emily. And I also received an email from Christina Chavez Wyatt. She's affiliated with the San Benito Business Council. Thanks, David. She just had some comments on these eight topics. New school funding, need to engage Rivas Caballero, Crystal, Sean. To farmland mitigation, the city should engage in the county's HCP. I believe that stands for Habitat Conservation Plan, if I'm not mistaken. Where does Lafco on this? Sensitive habitat, the city should engage in the county's HCP. Growth management, the business council has supported the city's effort on growth management for single-family market-rate residential, HCD, but a halt two or more times. What is their current position? The special planning areas, yes, supported by Ambag, COG. Housing sites, yes, supported by Ambag, COG. Inclusionary zoning, yes, supported by Ambag and COG. So bear in mind, all of these 28 elements, subcategories, are important. And the general virtual audience has opportunities to comment on any of these categories and elements, regardless if they're on the highlighted eight items or not. So without further ado, I ask for the, normally I ask for a staff report, but I think we're gonna have a presentation.
Yes, we are. We will get that set up. We'll have Placeworks provide a presentation up next, and we'll have David Early.
Great. Thank you very much, Abraham, and thank you, Chair Hughboy. I'm David Early with Placeworks, and I am the consultant working with you as the principal in charge. Here with me this evening is also Carrie Stone from our office, and she is our project manager. I see that the presentation is already being shared with you. I don't know if it's possible for it to be made full screen, which would be nicer to look at, if that's possible. That's closer to full screen. That's great. Thank you. And under view, if you are interested in looking, I think under view, you'll see full screen down towards the bottom. Lovely. Thank you. And we could have the next slide. So tonight, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna make a presentation about all three of these items all at once, and I'm doing that in order that I would suggest through the chair that you then open it up for one round of public comments, and that all comments be made at the same time. And then, and before that, once I finish my presentation, I can ask Planning Commissioners if there are questions. I'll finish my presentation, take any questions. Then you could have public comment on all of the items, and then go into a discussion of both the vision and values, as well as the policy recommendations. There are a lot of policy recommendations, so as Chair Hughboy said, we're recommending that you focus in on eight subject areas tonight. But of course, we're prepared to talk about any and all of them. So if I could have the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the general plan update itself. I know many of you are very familiar with this, but both for the Planning Commissioners not on the G-PAC and for the public, I wanted to talk a little bit about the general plan. And the general plan is what, excuse me, what I think of as the blueprint for growth and development within the community. Every city and county in California is required by law to have a general plan. In the case of the City of Hollister, the general plan applies to all of the areas inside the city, and it also sets city policy for areas outside the city limits in what's called the sphere of influence, and even a larger area called the planning area. The general plan establishes the community vision and supporting goals, policies, and actions, particularly in regard to future development, but also in regard to balancing growth, conservation, and quality of life. And it also serves as a documentation of baseline environmental conditions here in 2021, so that as change occurs, we can understand what the environmental consequences of those changes are. Next slide. The general plan consists of a series of seven required elements. The law calls them elements instead of chapters, because it's not necessary that they be arranged in individual chapters, although in the case of Hollister, the existing general plan has six chapters that cover these seven required elements. And let me say, it's a very good general plan already, the one adopted in 2005. It does cover all the things it needs to cover, and largely what we're doing is updating it for a series of policy issues that have arisen in the 16 years since the last general plan was adopted. And the general plan does have, as required by law, an element or chapter about land use and community design. It has a circulation element, a housing element, a natural resources and conservation element, an open space and agriculture element, and then it combines two elements that are otherwise required by law in a single health and safety element, and that includes both safety and noise, which are the two other required elements required by law. This Hollister general plan also has one more element in it that's called an optional element. Any community can add any additional element that it likes. Hollister has already added a community services and facilities element, which we will be keeping, and we are adding two additional elements on arts and economic development. Next slide. The general plan update that we're engaged in right now is based on seven overall goals that you see listed here. The first is to engage a very broad spectrum of the community, and we've been working diligently to engage all of members of the Hollister community in this process. Some of you may have heard that we actually just recently had a Spanish-language workshop with about 40 people in attendance, with the workshop conducted entirely in Spanish by our staff and yours. I think that was a really important milestone in that broad community engagement. We've also had a number of English-language meetings with good participation as well. Our other goals here are to establish the community's vision for Hollister in the year 2040, and we'll be looking at that vision tonight. We've understood that you want to maintain your small-town agricultural character, that you want to manage growth consistent with community goals, you want to ensure high-quality development, support economic development, and of course, you need to respond to state mandates that have arisen since the last adoption in 2005. Next slide. The project actually has several components that go beyond the general plan update. The general plan update is the broadest of these components, but there's also implementation of what's called Senate Bill 743, which is a state law that requires a shift in the way the city assesses traffic impacts from using level of service, which many of you may know as congestion-based measurement, and going to measuring vehicle miles traveled instead. And we're working with our consultants at Kim Lee Horn to work on that SB 743 implementation. We're also preparing for you a climate action plan, as well as a hazard mitigation plan, an environmental impact report on all of those items, and we'll be conducting a municipal service review, which is required by your local agency formation commission in advance of any annexations of new land into the city. So a lot of different components in this general plan update process. We're gonna be focusing on the general plan itself tonight. Next slide. So I mentioned already that we are working with several different geographies. You can see on this map, and I know it's a little hard to read if you're probably in the audience, but hopefully you can, on a computer, you should be able to see it pretty well, that we're looking at the area inside the city limit, which is shown as the black line on this document, as well as the sphere of influence, which is the yellow line and is the area that Lafco, the local agency formation commission, has already designated as possibly subject to future annexation. But we're also looking at what's called the urban service area, which is an area that the city agreed several years earlier before now that is a possible place where sewer and water service might be extended. And then we also have a planning area, which is the largest of these areas with the purple dash line around it, and that's the area that although the city likely would never annex it, that the city recognizes as possibly relevant to the city's future planning decision-making. This process has a lot of opportunities for public involvement. We've been holding a number of workshops and events, as well as online activities under COVID-19. Unfortunately, most of those workshops have been conducted via Zoom, but we still have had very good participation, as I mentioned, both in English and in Spanish. I hope we'll be able to switch back to live events before we do the actual adoption, and with live events, hopefully in the fall. We have had a large number of G-PAC meetings as well. The G-PAC actually met five times just the last couple of months to review the work you're seeing this evening. We'll have several meetings here before the Planning Commission, including this one tonight, and we'll have several city council meetings as well. Next slide. We do have a very robust website as well. This is a picture of the homepage of the website, which is located at Hollister2040.org. All the information is available in both English and Spanish, and it's a great place to go online for information about online activities, upcoming meetings, and to review all the background information that's already been published for the general plan. I wanted to talk a little bit about the schedule for the project. We're right now at the end of the third of the lines on this chart. We have already documented baseline conditions and future trends. We've prepared a draft vision, which we're showing to you this evening, and we've also prepared a series of policy assessments with draft policy language that's coming to you this evening as well. We'll wrap up this third part of the process with a city council meeting that's scheduled now for June 22, and that will be the end of the third line on this chart. From there, we will go into preparing both the draft general plan itself, as well as the other work products that I mentioned, there's the climate action plan, the emergency plan, and the environmental impact report, and those will all be published in the fall of this year. And then after, from the fall until early next summer, we anticipate a six-to-nine-month adoption process by which all of these reports and products will be reviewed in public, and they will ultimately come back through the G-PAC to your Planning Commission, and then ultimately to the city council for adoption. And I wanted just to mention, as I already said, that we do have a general plan advisory committee, or G-PAC. It's functioned really well. It did not have a full complement of members until just recently, but both before its membership was filled out and now afterwards. It's really done a great job in doing both of these two things, one, to review and make recommendations to your commission and the city council about the work products, and also to serve as project ambassadors, to spread the word about the general plan update and encourage participation. So the G-PAC members are doing all those things. If we get up the next slide, you'll see a list of the members, and those do include the two council members, Mayor Velasquez, as well as Councilmember Rosendez, two of your commissioners, Commissioner Hughboy, as well as Commissioner Stevens, and three members of the public, Chris Evans, Carol Johnson, and Larry Rebekki. So that concludes my presentation just about the general plan. I did say already, I think you should just take one round of public comment after I finish my presentation, but I've been talking quite a bit here. How about if I stop for a minute and through the chair, we could ask just if any Planning Commissioners have questions about any of the information I've presented so far?
Thank you very much, David. I did have a comment regarding the new elements. We've mentioned economic development and the arts and culture element. As I recall, when we were discussing the environmental justice topic, it was suggested that we also make that a standalone element.
Yes, you're absolutely right about that, and I apologize. That slide is a little out of date, but you're right that just in the last few weeks, the G-PAC did make a recommendation that we should have a standalone environmental justice element, and we are planning to do that. So that list should be expanded.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions from my fellow commissioners?
Just one comment. This is Commissioner Mora. I see that we're gonna add the economic development as an element as part of the update, which I think is great, because it's very important, especially for the City of Hollister. I'm just curious as to how eager the mayor and council member Rosendez are in actually participating in economic development, considering that they don't really participate or communicate much with the EDC. So, and the Economic Development Corporation is very big in bringing businesses, opportunities to not just the county, but the City of Hollister. So I'm glad to see that we're gonna focus on that part, but I'm just, I like to see a little bit more involvement from some of our elected officials here in the city and work with the organizations that are helping attract businesses and job creations here to the city. So that's great to see, but I'm just hoping that we get a little bit more participation from some of our local elected leaders.
Okay. Thank you, Sal. Roxanne? Roxanne? Any, any comments, questions?
Um, no, no comments or questions. I've just really enjoyed being a part of the G-PAC, and I'm happy that we've gotten to this point. I feel like we've made some really good progress, and I think the group has worked really well together, so other than that, no other comments or questions.
Great, and I'm sorry. Did I have someone who wanted to speak? I, I wanted to say also that being part of this G-PAC committee and working with the fellow city councilmen, my fellow planning commissioner Roxanne Stevens, and the three persons from the general public along with Placeworks, although there, we have different opinions on some of these subjects, finding the commonalities and working together and being productive, I, I find that we're really, you know, my, my hat's off to everyone involved, that we really made a lot of progress to this point. Thank you very much. So with any questions or comments from the planning commission, I'll open up the public hearing now.
I'm sorry, if I could, my idea, if it's okay, is that I would complete my presentation. I actually have two more parts, and then that would allow the public to hear the entire presentation and then respond to the entire presentation in one round of public comment, if that would be all right.
That's very, very good, thank you. Yes, please proceed.
All right, so I'll continue with the vision statement. I will stop again simply for questions from the planning commission. I encourage members of the public to hold questions if you have any questions about what I already presented. They could be asked during the public comment period, any comments on what I already presented, and then comments or questions about any of the next two parts could all come from the public at once. But let me dive in then with the vision statement, if we could have the next slide. Just wanted to give a little background about the vision statement first. What is a general plan vision statement? It's interesting, a vision statement is not actually required in the law. When Placeworks does a general plan, we really encourage communities to have a vision statement, but your current general plan doesn't have one. But I think your current general plan actually shows a lot about what, what the community wants and what its vision is, but it was never articulated in a single statement, and that's something we're very happy to have been able to do with you, with both members of the public and with the G-PAC. And it's intended to be a statement that really sets up the entire general plan. The entire general plan, as you know, is several hundred pages long, so it's a little bit much to wade through, but the vision statement is just a one- or two-page statement that hopefully summarizes all the ideas that the general plan is trying to support. And so in that sense, it describes the future of Hollister as the city hopes to see it in the year twenty forty. It's expressing shared community values relating to all the topics in the general plan, and it is, it's already providing guidance for our preparation of general plan goals and policies. So you can see in this graphic that the vision statement sits at the top, the goals flow from it, and the policies flow from the vision statement, and from, the policies flow from the goals. So here's an example, the vision statement might and actually does have a statement, something to the effect that residents can both live and work in Hollister. So one of the goals that would, that would, that would support that vision, that specific part of the vision would be a goal of increasing local jobs, and some examples of policies and actions that would be intended to achieve that goal would be a policy to designate new land for commercial uses at the airport, or an action to develop a program to attract new businesses to the industrial park. Now, these are just examples, but they do give an idea, I hope you can see, of how the vision statement, the goals, and the policies and actions fit together. So if we could have the next slide. We did do quite a bit of visioning work with the community. That was actually almost a year ago, last June and July. We had four virtual workshops on the vision statement. You can see some pictures of them here. We had an online survey and other engagement tools active on the website in June and July of twenty twenty. We then drafted the general plan, the general plan vision statement, and reviewed it with the G-PAC in October of twenty twenty. So it's been around for quite a while. Some of you commissioners and members of the public may well have gotten to see it already. We did not bring it to you as a planning commission until we have our other work on policies done, because we wanted to make this meeting as efficient as possible, but this vision statement has been available and guiding our work for some time already. Next slide. So the vision statement has two parts. The first part are a set of values, and we identified these four values with the community as we work together on this vision statement. And as you can see here, the four values that we think really are supported throughout the city of Hollister's work in planning and development and conservation are firstly equity, second diversity, third innovation, and fourth sustainability. And you can see in the text about each of them, I won't read it all out, although it's been available to you in the packet and in a number of other places over the last few months. But the equity obviously is ensuring that everyone is treated fairly. Diversity means respect for diverse cultural, religious, and political backgrounds. Innovation, thinking bolder and fostering new ideas. And sustainability, ensuring that our actions contribute to social, economic, and environmental well-being. So these are four values that are intended to underlie the entire general plan. And then if we could have the next slide, you can see the draft vision itself. And again, I won't read it word for word, but this is intended to be, it's just over a one-page statement on eight-and-a-half-by-eleven paper, and it's intended to really provide an overview of everything that the general plan is trying to do. And just to give a few highlights, it does talk about the beautiful surrounding agricultural landscape, the historic past, the small-town charm, the architectural character of historic Hollister. It talks about Hollister as an innovation hub with its industrial park and airport, with shopping, with tourism related to both Pinnacle National Park and the State particular recreation area, and the availability of high-quality jobs, allowing residents to both live and work locally, freeing up time that might otherwise be spent traveling. It talks about transportation, it talks about community life, the vibrant historic downtown. It talks about arts, both arts programs as well as arts in public places, and it talks about coordinating with the County of San Benito and other local agencies to ensure orderly and well-planned growth into the future. So those are some of the key points in this vision statement. We'll be happy to take additional comments about it from the public tonight. Public members did already commented on it before the G-PAC, and then we'd like to hear from you if you have any changes to it before we finalize it for consideration by the city council in June. And that ends that presentation. If we go on to the next slide, I believe we'll be at the policy recommendations. So before I go into those, let me just ask quickly of the planning commission only, if there are any questions about that vision statement or the values.
Any questions or comments?
I think it's a good plan.
And also, David, thank you for that. And going back to the two thousand and five update, we did have a visioning session or visiting workshops, but we never did get anything down in writing in terms of a statement. And we look at the volume of material subjects to discuss. Really, the vision statement, and I agree, is the foundation for where everything else is, everything else is based on that vision statement. It, in a way, it simplifies the process to a certain degree and makes it that much more coherent. I really appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions before I move on?
Any other questions, comments? Go ahead and proceed, please.
All right, so this will, for better or worse, be the longest part of my presentation, but I do want to talk about the policy recommendations that came out from the G-PAC, and then we can take the next slide. Let me just say again that the G-PAC met actually five times from March twenty-third through April twenty-seven, and that was preceded by three, well, preceded by two public workshops that held, were held in early March, March ninth and tenth, as well as a Spanish-language workshop on May sixth. There was also a policy options survey available online, so there's been quite a bit of input into this, and you can tell from the fact that the G-PAC held five separate meetings on these subjects that there was a lot of work to cover. We're hoping that you can cover all of this in one evening tonight. I personally feel that the G-PAC recommendations are very sound, and I don't think that you need to review every one of them line by line, but I wanted tonight to give you an introduction to all of them and let you know that if, if, if there's any item that any of you wants to bring up tonight, we're certainly prepared and happy to discuss it. Next slide. This is a list of the twenty-four topics that the G-PAC did consider. You'll see that one of them is actually crossed out, and that's number twelve, cannabis, which was an economic development topic. And the economic, the, the G-PAC did decide that although they'd considered it, that the general plan did not need special cannabis policies within it. And so that's crossed out because it won't be moved forward as a subject for separate policymaking. But there are twenty-three other items here, one through eleven and thirteen through twenty-four, all of which have policy recommendations for you and the city council from the G-PAC. Tonight, we're going to focus on the eight items that are shown here in orange. School funding, farmland mitigation, sensitive habitats, level of service, growth management, special planning areas, residential land use designations, and inclusionary housing. The reason we've chosen those eight is that, number one, that they were all of the most concern and interest to both the G-PAC and the members of the public. And number two, in some cases, there have been either issues that the G-PAC was not able to resolve completely or where we had to make some additions since the time of the G-PAC meetings, and we wanted to let you know about those as well. But again, all of the other items on here, all twenty-four items that are listed here, are available to be discussed this evening, so I would suggest perhaps after you discuss these first eight that I'm going to be talking about tonight, that if you all want to talk about other items, we can make time for that as well. So I'm going to dive in now on new school funding, and I believe that'll be the next slide. So in new school funding, the issue here is that existing school impact fees, which are capped by state law, are insufficient to construct new school facilities. Senate Bill fifty is the name of the state law. It limits the amount of impact fees that the city can collect. An additional school funding is needed to be generated in some other way if there's, if, in order to close that gap. Really, I would say for a new school, the impact fees probably only cover somewhere between twenty or maybe thirty or forty percent of the cost of building such a school. The other eighty percent, or at least sixty or seventy percent, is not covered through those fees and needs to be found in some other way. There are statewide funding sources available, but those are quite competitive. It is possible to have the voters pass bond measures, and that has happened in the past in Hollister, but Hollister voters more recently failed to pass such a bond measure, and so funding options are not that broad. In the next slide, I can show you the recommendations that came from the general plan advisory committee. The first was to try and create some incentives for developers who might voluntarily provide additional school funding. Those might include additional density, more flexible setbacks, higher building heights, or reduced parking requirements. And then the G-PAC did also recommend requiring preparation of a specific plan for any new areas that are to be annexed or newly designated for development within the city. And that specific plan would need to include some measure for adequate voluntary developer funding as a precondition for development. That would make it a voluntary option, and therefore, within state law. But, and then, of course, the land would not need to be annexed or developed if the development community did not want to pay those fees. So that's how that would work and would be a way to close that funding gap through non-mandatory fees. Next slide. So the next item is agricultural mitigation. The city is, as we all know, surrounded by farmland of various sorts. It includes prime farmland, fine farmland of statewide importance, and unique farmland. Some of it is grazing land, some of it is in crop production. And as agricultural land is lost to new development, many jurisdictions do require mitigation through the dedication of development rights on other agricultural land at a ratio of either one-to-one or two-to-one. The city of Hollister does not have a requirement for that right now, although many environmental impact reports have required it as a mitigation measure. Next slide. The G-PAC has recommended that the city general plan start requiring two acres of agricultural land to be preserved for each acre of farmland covered, to establish the city as the enforcement agency, but to assign management responsibilities to an outside conservation organization, such as perhaps San Benito Land Trust, and requiring this mitigation on all lands classified as prime farmland, unique farmland, and farmland of statewide importance. Next slide. And the third item are sensitive habitats. The city of Hollister is surrounded by sensitive habitats for red-legged frog and tiger salamander. And I said surrounded, but that's really a misrepresentation, I'm sorry for that. It's on, it's land on the east side of the city, east of Fairview, and you can see it in the crosshatched area on the map on the screen. These are lands that are thought to be habitat for these two critical species, the red-legged frog and the tiger salamander. And there is, has been future residential development planned for this area, both under city and county auspices. If we could have the next slide. The G-PAC looked at this and considered a recommendation to prohibit development on that land. But since that time, we did get direct input from the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, who suggested a somewhat more nuanced approach in which we would require that a qualified biologist evaluate the potential for biological resources on project sites within that critical habitat area, and that we would avoid development in any areas with high-quality habitat. And that's defined here, sites with known species occupants, the presence of breeding habitat, a large area of suitable habitat, or the, and the absence of nearby development. So if those conditions were to occur, then the land would be precluded from development. I especially wanted to call this to your attention because this is a slightly less restrictive regulation than was suggested by the G-PAC, but it is in keeping with input from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Next slide. The fourth item, as I mentioned, is traffic level of service. I already reminded you that state law now precludes using level of service in environmental impact report as a, as an impact assessment tool, but the city's general plan can still require a level of service goals in all locations. And in fact, the two thousand and five's general plan uses level or service and establishes LOSC as the desired condition throughout town. In twenty twenty, twenty-nine of thirty-seven intersections that we've studied were operating at these adopted standards, but that means that eight were not at those standards. And so there's already an issue that you're not currently being able to maintain that level of service C goal. If we could have the next slide. Looking at that issue, the G-PAC did decide that they wanted to maintain level of service C as the goal in most, most parts of the city, but they did establish a suggested, a suggested exception for the downtown, allowing level of service D at the downtown intersections that you see on this map, at Fourth and Monterey, and San Benito and Sally Street, and South Street at San Benito Street. All other downtown intersections, there would be no level of service standard at all. And this is in keeping with the idea, if I can just explain it, that level of service in a downtown area often does deteriorate precisely because we want to have a lot of activity in the downtown. So as the downtown becomes a more popular place, more and more people are there, there are likely to be a few more cars in the area, but that's really part of creating a more vital downtown. And it's not reasonable to think of wanting a very vital downtown while still having completely free-flowing traffic through the area. And that's the reason for this G-PAC recommendation. If we could have the next slide, our traffic engineers, Kim Lee Horn, have suggested that the industrial area on the north side of town should also have a level of service of D instead of a goal of C. And that's because there are somewhat constrictive roadways in that area, and as economic activity is enhanced in that area, and particularly with truck traffic and large numbers of employees, it's probably not going to be possible to maintain level of service C. And again, one wants the economic activity and the economic vitality, and therefore, a slightly lower level of service is likely to be acceptable. So our fifth item is about growth management. We did do already a very extensive analysis of likely future development and future demand in and around Hollister. The city of Hollister does have a fair amount of housing capacity still within its sphere of influence and its city limits, but it's important to understand that that housing capacity is almost entirely in the form of higher-density residential and mixed-use development. Very little of it, almost none of it, is available still as capacity on undeveloped land for single-family homes. And so if we're going to consider additional single-family home development, or if we look at a large amount of future new development, we would need to add additional development capacity. We looked at three possible growth scenarios for the city and the surrounding area in the unincorporated county. We projected future development demand under each of those scenarios at about two thousand, excuse me, two thousand units at a baseline case, about almost forty-nine-hundred units in a moderate growth case, and almost about sixty-eight-hundred units in a robust growth case. And in both of those two bigger conditions, it's likely that additional land would be needed to accommodate additional development, particularly if the city wanted a preponderance of single-family homes. You can see here on this chart, as many possibly as six-hundred-and-thirty-six acres of additional land would be needed to accommodate that robust needed to accommodate that robust development scenario, particularly with a preponderance of single-family homes. The G-PAC looked at that, if we could have the next slide, and decided that the G-PAC really does want to focus on, can I go to the next slide, actually? Let me just see here. Yeah, let me, well, I'm going to get everybody confused. Let's go back two slides. Even though I'm a little confused, sorry about that. The G-PAC did decide that it was perfectly acceptable to focus on most new development over the next 25 years or so, 20 years, in the higher densities and mixed-use categories. The G-PAC therefore did not decide to add a large amount of additional lands for, for single-family homes, but did want to add some additional lands for some development. And I'll talk more about that in a moment. Let's go on, though, to the next slide. And let me mention also that a second growth management issue for the City of Hollister is that there has been a fair, sort of a precedent that's been established over time, that the city not only was approving development within its limits, but has also been approving wastewater treatment capacity using the city's wastewater treatment plant for new development in the county. And that is, most likely it appears, in violation of some of the California Government Code, the specific number 56133 that you see here. The Government Code stipulates that the city can only provide service to new development outside its own boundaries, either inside the sphere of influence, if future annexation is expected, or outside the sphere of influence, only to address an immediate or pending health and safety threat. And that's not been the case so far today. The city has actually approved service, sewer service, to lands outside of its SOI without any threat of impending or immediate health, safety issues, and in fact, this was law land where there was currently no, no development in place, and hence, no possibility of a health or safety threat. So those agreements are of some, those precedents are of some concern. They were already memorialized in a couple of agreements called memorandums of understanding with the county, with the San Benito Water District and the Sunny Slope County Water District, and so we've, have some concerns about those memorandums of understanding as well. So if I could have the next slide, let me bring this all together and talk about the G-PAC's recommendations. The G-PAC did recommend adding about 190 acres to accommodate some additional development, most primarily on the north and south sides of the city, and you can see those in the yellow color on this map. The city also, the G-PAC also suggested that the city should develop general plan policy in conformance with state law, stating that wastewater treatment service and other city services would only be extended to lands within the city limits or areas within the SOI that are anticipated to be annexed soon, or consistent with the Government Code, Section 56133B, regarding threats to health and safety in any areas outside of the sphere. And the city further, the G-PAC further recommended that the city not renew the existing memorandum of understanding with the Sunny Slope County Water District when that MOU expires, which will be later this year, actually, just in a couple more months. So those are three important recommendations about growth management. If we have the next slide, I'll go quickly to the special planning areas. The city does have three new special planning areas that we were asked to study as part of this project. These are the Buena Vista Corridor, which is the blue area, as well as we expanded it to include the pink area along Highway 25 at the northern edge of this map. We also looked at the Meridian Road area, which is in green on this map, and the Union Road Corridor in purple on the south side of town. We worked with the G-PAC to consider how land use designations in each of these areas should potentially be changed, and the G-PAC made a series of recommendations, which I will show you now. Next slide. In the Buena Vista area, the G-PAC did decide that most of that area, even portions that are currently inside the city's sphere, should be designated and re-designated as agriculture. You see that here in this green color, but the G-PAC did also recommend a series of both medium-density and high-density housing right along Santa Ana Road and the Buena Vista Road that you see here, as well as some additional sites along Highway 25 that are shown further up on the map as well. And those are in the kind of buff-colored area. The pink area would remain as North Gateway Commercial, and some of the other areas are particular, are already developed with medium-density residential. So again, for this Buena Vista area, you can see primarily agriculture and some medium and high-density residential. Next slide, the G-PAC also looked at the Meridian Road area, which was considered perhaps for some additional single-family development. This, of course, is on the far northeast corner of town at Santa Ana Road and Fairview, and the G-PAC followed, or gave, gave a recommendation on the one hand, that it would be advisable to put Meridian Street through as a through street in this area, which would include needing to build a bridge across the water course that's there, but seeing that roadway as one really only to serve very local traffic, and actually making sure that the land use designations in that area reflect the existing residential estate nature of that area, taking away some potential for single-family homes in the area at higher densities, and being able to keep this area as a largely rural residential area with a small traffic circle intended to calm traffic in the area as well. And then lastly, in the Union Road area, the G-PAC had a very considerable discussion about that area on both sides of Union Road, both north and south, and on both sides of South Side Road. And you can see on this map that the G-PAC decided that a portion of that area, roughly the lower left quadrant, should be maintained in agriculture and should not be designated for development. However, the areas on both sides of the school, the existing school, would be designated for medium-density development. There would be high-density residential development along north of Union Road and approaching Highway 25, Airline Highway, and then there would be a mixed-use node that would be both higher-density residential as well as some commercial that would be between South Side and Airline Highway and south of Union Road. So you can see all of those items here on the map. I should mention also that the G-PAC felt strongly that in any of the development areas, to the extent possible that the existing orchard trees should be preserved as a part of upcoming development that might occur in that area. Next slides. We'll talk now about the last two items, which have to do with residential development. The G-PAC did consider high-density residential development and how and where it should be allowed in the city. State law, as you know, does require the city to have areas designated for higher-density development. Your current highest-density residential designation is only from 12 to 35 acres, which is both relatively low compared to what some other cities like Hollister are allowing, and is also a kind of odd designation in that 20 dwelling units per acre is in, is what the state considers to be the necessary minimum to get true affordability. So when your designation spans from 12 to 35, you don't have anywhere that's guaranteed to have that minimum of 20. And so the G-PAC did two things, if we could have the next slide. The G-PAC did direct us to create a designation that would have a minimum density of 20 units per acre, and asked us to figure out exactly where those sites might be. You can see them designated on this map in the dark red color, and the G-PAC did ask that they be, they be distributed throughout the city, and you can see that we did try to do that. So we have high-density residential sites throughout the city at these dark red locations. The G-PAC also asked that the maximum density in high-density residential go up from 45 up to 65 dwelling units per acre, and that in the downtown, the maximum go up all the way to 125 dwelling units per acre to allow for a really robust apartment building in the downtown. So those are three recommendations to do this evening. Finally, if we could have the next set of slides, our last topic is an inclusionary housing program. The G-PAC did direct that the general plan should have an inclusionary housing policy, which is a policy that would require a percentage of new market-rate housing be reserved for low and moderate-income housing households. The goals here would be to increase housing affordability, to reduce housing segregation, and to support state-mandated housing targets. We are aware, of course, that having inclusionary housing can cut into developer profits. In some cases, the state considers it as an impediment to housing production, and so we will need to do a feasibility study to ensure that this particular program would not affect housing feasibility. Your code already requires inclusionary housing for conversions of existing units, but this would be a new program to look at new development of both for-sale and for, and rental housing. If we could have the next slide, it talks about what parts of that program would be. They are, first, that the program would require the 20 percent of units be made affordable to moderate, low, and very low-income units. State law says that you can do such a requirement as up to 15 percent, but if we want to go beyond 15, the city will need a feasibility study to determine that the program won't be an impediment for housing production. The G-PAC further directed that we should not allow alternative compliance methods such as payment of INLU fees, land dedication, or allowing off-site construction of affordable units, and further directed that the single-family subdivisions of 40 units or greater not only need to fulfill that inclusionary requirement, but actually need to have 10 percent of their units built as multifamily units, in, and which we've interpreted to mean buildings of four or more. So that would mean, for instance, in a 40-unit single-family subdivision, you could actually have 36 single-family homes, and you'd have to build one fourplex. And as we thought about that, we were hopeful that that's not too burdensome a requirement. It's not a requirement for hugely multifamily buildings. They would not have to be apartment buildings. They could be built as a series of fourplexes that could be either gathered together or distributed throughout a subdivision as fourplex or greater units. That, I believe, if we could have the next slide, here we are, so this just comes back to that overall listing of all of the subjects. I've now gone through all of the eight subjects that are shown here in orange. Those are the ones that we identified as possibly the ones needing the most discussion. I would recommend through the chair that you now open it up for any questions on this presentation from any commissioners, and then open it up for public comment, and then come back and discuss first the vision and values, and then discuss these eight items. It's now seven o'clock. This meeting is intended to go till 8:30, so I'm hopeful that we can accomplish that agenda over the next hour and a half. And I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, David. Any questions or comments? I think I'll kick off a few questions and comments here. And I'll start with the new school funding with the SB 50, which is pretty clear that, unfortunately, I think it's, in my view, it's rather unfortunate that it requires developers to contribute, but caps the contribution to an inadequate level. So we have that in the books, but then we're saying that we're, we need to, if, if we have a, a development that the G-PAC recommends, and I think it's, it's creative and interesting about the flexibility of the zoning with allowing some concessions with setbacks and building heights. But what I'm pondering here is that we're also asking for a specific plan that includes, quote, adequate developer funding as a precondition for development. So in other words, here we have SB 70 that says, or SB 50, excuse me, that says that, that the jurisdiction has a limit on what they can ask for contributions from developers, but then we're saying, well, if you want to go ahead, you're going to have to have a specific, we want a specific plan, we want to see contributions. It seems to me that there's a conflict there, and maybe I'm wrong. That's my first comment. The other, sensitive habitats, and I, I thought that, you know, that the G-PAC was, was pretty adamant about having some, showing some sensitivity on, on the species that are endangered, but now we, I guess the wildlife organization is saying that, that the biologist can evaluate potential sites that may support, I want to say may support. So I guess that, that we're incumbent to have these mappings of these areas where sensitive habitat is definitely known, and we've, we've gone, kind of gone over where the, the red-legged frog and the tiger salamander on the east side and here and there, but does that mean that if, if, if there's a parcel of land that is proximate to these areas, would that, just by inspection, by common sense, you would think that that land would, would be able to support, support an area for the sensitive habitat to, to flourish? So it's, it's just a little bit vague there on what land may be supportive to sensitive habitat, and may not be exactly within these areas mapped that we know of. I know the county has some of those areas mapped out fairly, fairly clear, but it's a little unclear to me what area or surrounding areas, I guess, may support that type of I guess I'll just go and finish my, my comments now. The special study areas, and I know we spent quite some time on that, I just, I just want to say that, referring to the Buena Vista Corridor, where we're, normally, we, on the books today, we have North Gateway Commercial. Now we're saying high-density residential, which I think, I think that's, that's very intriguing, and I think that's, that could be very, very, add a lot of invigoration to that area, if you will. But what I, what I have to say that is to temper that with non-conforming, non-conforming issues that if we, if we go ahead and rezone a certain area of land, then we're going to have to have some consideration for those pre-existing conditions that, that are in the books now prior to rezoning, because that may create some issues for improving your land if you're not within that land use designation and you have different zoning requirements and development requirements. You've got to be mindful of, of those areas that are, are there today that will be non-conforming after we, we change the land use in those, especially in the Buena Vista Corridor. Finally, I had some, just for, these are my main points of topics here, is that on the inclusionary zoning, and again, you know, we've been talking about this, I've been on the planning commission for quite some time, we've been talking about inclusionary zoning for quite some time here. And now we know that the 2016 housing element calls for a strategy, and calls for, actually, it, it, from what my understanding of the 2016 housing element, it says that we do need this inclusionary zoning. We're going beyond the, we're going up to 20 percent here, which, again, from what Mr. Early is saying, is that it requires a feasibility study. My question is, that's, that's all fine and good for me, but my question is, when is that feasibility study to be prepared? Is it going to be prepared during the, the general plan update? And who's going to do it? And does that need to be done prior to adoption of the 20 percent inclusionary zone requirement?
Right, well, that is actually a question I can try and answer. The answer is simply is, we don't know. We're discussing with staff two different options. One is that both a feasibility study and creation of the plan, of the ordinance itself could be done now during the time that the general plan is updated. The other possibility is that it would be an action for implementation after the general plan is updated, and would be funded and managed separately. So staff is still considering a recommendation in that regard, and that would come back to the City Council to authorize the additional work if it's to be done, and otherwise, it would be a follow-on implementation item for the general plan itself.
So regarding my first comment on this new school funding, am I, am I correct to say that it looks like there's an apparent conflict with the specific plan and SB 50?
Our, our opinion is that it's not. This is obviously a legal issue, and we would be happy for the city attorney to opine on it. There are a number of other communities throughout Northern California that do have similar requirements, and those have not been successfully challenged in court. So we believe that this is a, a, a Google So we believe that this is a, a, a Google-able defensible way to proceed. The reason is that the city does not have a duty to, or a responsibility to designate new parcels of land for residential development or any sorts of development. That is a voluntary action on the part of the city, and the city can work with developers to make whatever voluntary arrangements that those, those developers want to make. So if developers don't want to move forward with larger, more adequate school funding, they don't have to, and the city also would then not, would, would not necessarily need to re-designate any additional lands for that residential development.
Okay. Thank you. I think I did have a, a general comment, too, and that is that it's, you know, it's, a lot, a lot of the recommendations here are, are very good, and I, and I really appreciate the hard work that we've all spent on this. But there's going to be questions about who and how on these implementation promote, you know? For example, we have, you know, with the recommendations, the words here, promote, incentivize, quote unquote, words of that na, of that nature. It, it sounds good, but am I correct to say is that once we all, in concurrence with these policy recommendations, we're going to get into the lead agency, whose responsibility is it, a timeframe and the implementation measures? Am I correct? Is that?
You're correct about that, yes. That will, there won't be a special additional work period on that. That will all be included in the draft general plan itself, and you'll look at it at the time that you review the general plan itself. But you're absolutely right, that there's a number of measures in here that need to have more meat on the bone, so to speak, and you'll see that when you see the general plan.
Great, great. And that, that was, that concludes my comments and questions. Anyone else? Do I steal the wind in your sails? Oh, thank you. Sal?
Yeah, David, thank you, Commissioner Huboy. You did touch on a couple of things that I was also going to talk about. I guess I'll start with some of my notes regarding retail leakage. So i, is there going to be a study conducted to evaluate the extent of retail leakage for the city of Hollister?
We, we've already done that study. I'm sorry, I hope I'm not interrupting, but that study's been done, and we actually have a slide further on in the deck that has the numbers, if you do want to hear them, but there's pretty significant leakage that has, it's, it's people shopping for a number of items that include particularly larger-ticket household and general-use items, clothing, higher-end clothing, appliances, and so forth.
Okay, great. So I'll, I'll kind of reserve my comments until we get to that slide, because there's a lot of things.
Well, I, just to be clear, I'm not going to show that slide unless asked, so I'm, I'm not running the slides, but I could ask.
Okay.
That the slide can go up right now?
Yeah, if we can pull, pull that slide up, that way we can, we can look at it, because I do have some questions. Specifically, I, I want to see how we're going to tackle and, and, you know, the leakage that, that, the retail leakage. So it's, it's great to talk about it in theory and philosophy, but, you know, I, I want to see that, that if the, if the G-PAC is actually going to make recommendations to reduce the retail leakage, I, I, I'm familiar with the city of Salinas, or Watsville, excuse me, Watsville, they created, they did a study on retail leakage, and they, they developed a pretty good plan to capture some of that sales tax that they were losing out on, which helped their city revenues significantly increase over time. Obviously, they couldn't capture as much as they have, you know, within a couple of years, but they had a pretty good plan with over five-year, six-year timeframe, they've been able to capture that sales tax. So if, if we can get to that.
So if I could ask staff, that's slide fifty-one.
Oh, thank you for that help.
So I don't know if it's either Amber who's running that or someone else, but if you just jump a long ways forward to slide fifty-one, I can show you that there's twenty-six million dollars in retail leakage, there it is, that's annual spending outside of the city limits. It's driven by several factors, as it says here, which is both the location of, of people's workplace. We, we think that because so many people work outside of Hollister, that it's easy for them to shop in stores near their workplaces and then bring those goods back to Hollister's. And there is a sort of a corresponding shortage in local retail inventory, particularly in the larger retailers, who are all very well-known, of course, as well as some of the higher-end chain and retail stores. So the next slide does just mention, if we have some of the G-PAC recommendations, these are similar, of course, to items that Hollister did, and, and this would be a, a follow-on action for the city to develop a real detailed plan to stem the loss of retail leakage. I, I might mention that we, we have still had a comment in the chat from Mr. Rodriguez suggesting that we were holding, holding slides in some way in abeyance or hiding them. I want to clarify that we have these additional forty slides here that we have not shown you, because it would take me another thirty or forty minutes to go through the forty slides, and I don't think it would be a good use of our time. But they're, they're not a secret. There are slides that are available if the subjects come up, just as this one just did. Mr. Rodriguez is now asking why. I don't want to take an additional forty minutes to go through the forty slides. I think that's self-explanatory, that our time tonight is limited till about eight-thirty, and we're hoping to hear from the public and also from the, the commissioners themselves. So, but again, if questions come up about any of these items, we'll be very happy to put the slides up and show them. And with that, I'd like to go back to the slide we had up, which I believe is about slide forty, that has the list of items. A little farther than that, I'm sorry. Forward, we should be going forward right now, and it's the one, this one, there we go. Not that one, next one, one back, there we go. All right. I do see other folks writing into the chat, really as a matter of procedure, I'm not going to, I'm going to not, yeah, as a matter of procedure, I'm not going to respond to comments placed in the chat from here on out. When we come to the public comment period, Chair Huboy, if, if people have not gotten to speak, we can read those questions at that time, and then once the public comment period ends, the chat can be preserved, but the public comment period is really the only time when we can answer questions that come up in the chat or that come up otherwise from the public.
Very good.
Well, thank you very much. I do appreciate that, although I, 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 I do disagree with, with your opinion regarding not presenting the slides that we do have available. I, you know, this is a special session, this is a special meeting, and this is for the, the public at large, and we should be going over all of the slides and all of the information, whether it takes us a two-hour meeting or a four-hour meeting, that's what we're here to do, and that's part of our job. And we, as, as the city, and as a resident of, of the city, as a taxpayer, I, I would expect a high level of service for what you should be providing to us. So I, I, I agree with Mr. Rodriguez, I believe is the name, that the slides should be presented. Obviously, yeah, it's going to take you a little bit longer, but I think we've all have been through regular commission meetings, city council meetings, board of supervisor meetings that have gone on longer than schedule. So I, I, I disagree with you, and, and we should be presenting the public all of the information that you guys have gone through, because if not, if we, if we don't do that, we're doing this community a disservice. You know, they look to the city council, planning commissions, all the commissions, to give the public the necessary information, and when we don't do that, whether it's intentional or not, then that's how the public perceives that we are attempting to hide information from them. You know, it, it happens regularly, you know, not just here locally, but, you know, if you look in government, you know, federal and state, you know, if you look at, at bills and the language, they have thousands of pages, and they give it to, to, to the, the elected officials the night before they're supposed to vote. So how, how can people make an informed decision and also give their feedback if we're, we're not giving the proper information? So that, that's my comment on that. You know, I, I, hopefully, if there is another presentation, that we do take the time, because I know that myself, and I'm sure the rest of the commissioners, whether they're here or, or at home participating, we've all kind of cleared our calendar for the evening, and, and I, I pretty much told my kids, because my wife's away, hey, I need you to take care of your little sister, make sure she's, she's in bed by eight, because I'm probably not going to get home till about nine or ten o'clock. So, you know, I, I, I think we need to respect the, the community's opinion and, and not just kind of simply, passively dismiss what they're saying, because it's very important. I'm the type of individual, probably like Mr. Rodriguez, which I, I don't, I don't know who he is, but he, he sounds like some, like, that's something I would say, and I want the information. And if that means I have to be online, listening past my bedtime, then that's something that I would choose to do. So hopefully in the future that we take a little bit more consideration, be a little bit more respectful to, to our, to the opinions of, of our community members.
Mr. Sal, Commissioner Mora, I don't know if you were at the beginning of the meeting, but I did emphasize that all these elements and subcategories are of importance.
Yeah.
And, and we do really want to bring this out into the public forum. But what we did have a consensus on, that we were going to highlight these eight topics. I don't know if you were part of that discussion or not, but that's what we, I did get consensus. Okay, I did get consensus, but we're free. Anyone from the virtual audience can comment on any of these items and topics, and I, I'm, and I encourage that. I know that, for example, that, you know, being a member of the Public Art Review Committee, the arts and culture element is, seems to me, we have good consensus on some of these topics. Other ones are a little more contentious and have generated more interest from the public on the workshops and also from the G-PAC, and that's for the, trying to focus on these, these ones that show the most interest. I, I can understand that point of view on the presentation, and also respect, you know, that we're, we're, hey, we're here to, whatever it takes. I mean, I, I don't know if you were here, but before, we, we would have planning commission meetings that go beyond midnight.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 I.
So I mean, it's, we had several of those, and, you know, I mean, that's just the way it, it goes. It's part of the, part of the job of being a good planning commissioner is to make sure that, that we're not, again, I, I agree, we're not hiding anything here.
Yeah, exactly.
We're, we're going to discuss anything that the public wants to discuss, or any of the fellow planning commissioners want, want to discuss in its entirety, so.
Yeah. No, no, I, I was.
Just want to make that point clear.
Yeah. As I was driving here, I, I heard what you had mentioned, so I was participating on my phone, but, yeah, I, I didn't necessarily a hundred percent agree, but I, I definitely understood, you know, at least that we, we would focus on those and then try to bring in, you know, touch on other subjects.
Right.
I, I, I just think from a public standpoint, if, if they don't have access to everything, they kind of want to know, how come these slides aren't being presented?
Yes.
Because then, like I said, it gives the appearance.
Yes.
That we're hiding.
And I know as, as, as being a part of the G-PAC committee, you know, I, I saw that from the very beginning, we're supposed to be ambassadors to get the word out.
Yeah.
I, I, for one, have been putting on my Facebook page, what's going on in Hollister? We're having a meeting here, you know, we want everybody to participate. I mean, the, our general plan is only as good as our participation in it, so we can all provide, we're all stakeholders in this process. It's extremely important. I don't, I haven't seen any other, and I'm not pointing the finger, but I, I haven't seen any other members of the fellow G-PAC that I know of that have been doing it. But I, for one, I know how important this is to get the word out, bilingually, for the surveys, I mentioned that before, and to make sure that in the best way possible to use social media, which I think is a good part, good thing of social media, is to let people know what's going on here, so.
No, exactly, exactly. We definitely appreciate, because I, because I do see your posts on, on social media, and I do like the fact that you're getting out there and getting the information.
Other than the one, me holding the guitar, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, which I do miss, which I do miss.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, when it comes to retail leakage, I think that goes hand in hand with economic development, job creation, all those things. Yes, it's true that majority of our, I don't have the exact number, because we probably haven't studied it, but, you know, the majority of our residents here in Hollister do, do travel, or at least at one point did travel out of town a lot. You know, we're starting to see a little bit more people go back to work, to the office. But, yeah, i, it's, it's true, you know, you know, we, we need to capture that, that sales tax revenue that we're missing out on, and, you know, unfortunately, you, you know, there's a lot of stores that, that we don't have here, that, that are next door at Gilroy or San Jose or Salinas, Monterey. So th, those are the types of things, you know, I like, can we satisfy everyone's needs? No, but we could do a better job as a city and, and try to get some of these retail stores to open up here. And, you know, those who've been involved in, in, you know, city business knows that, that large corporations, you know, big business, big box stores, that there's a formula they use to determine if, if they're going to open up shop here. And, you know, unfortunately, it's rooftops, you know, so we have to decide, you know, where do we want to go as a community? You know, I hear all the time, I hear, you know, when I was campaigning, I kept hearing, you know, some people want, want, want to see more housing, because, you know, they, they, they want some of those other stores that they love to shop at to come to town. They know how, you know, how those businesses are going to get here. On the other hand, I hear, you know, a lot of people say, well, no, we don't want more houses, but we want all these other businesses. So it's like, how do we accomplish both goals without growth? You know, so, so I think, you know, we need to focus on economic development and incentivize, you know, some of these businesses to come here without giving away ten, twenty years of sales tax revenue. That's, that's one of the big issues I have with some of our decisions. But when it comes to new school funding, I definitely agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, we need to be careful that we're not violating, was it SB fifty?
SB fifty.
SB fifty, because, and, and I'm not sure what some of the other cities are doing, because, because I know that, that we want to say, okay, you know, what we want to have twenty percent of low, affordable to moderate housing for each housing development, although SB fifty states fifteen percent. The, the, the one thing I am concerned about is, is by making it, well, there's two things. The first one is, is could we be potentially creating lawsuits down the road if developers are, if, if proposed developments are constantly being denied if the developer decides not to create voluntary developer funding? That's the one thing that I am concerned about, and, and although, you know, it may be, you know, the opinion of placeworks, that it's not, I think we need to look into it legally, you know, because we all have different opinions, but we're not lawyers. So it'd be good to know what exactly is considered legal and what is illegal, because I, I'd hate to set us up down the road, because if every development that does not set up a voluntary development funding gets denied, I can see something happen. So I'd like to try to avoid that. Do I agree with it? I definitely agree with it, but at the same time, we need to do what's, what's legal, you know? And, and if it is legal, and if there is potentially case law out there that proves that it's legal, then, hey, let's do it, let's get it done, and, and get people on board. So, yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of tough, because, you know... Because, you know, even the state says, yes, there's not enough funding. But yet restricts what the cities and counties can, can collect. So, uh, I definitely disagree with that. And especially the fact that, that the state law states, at the SB three thirty states that, you know, we cannot have, uh, that it's against the law to have a housing moratorium. But yet the, the state isn't willing to help, help the cities fund, you know, not the developments, but the maintaining of, of the roads and infrastructure. That, that's very frustrating. Uh, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully, something does get done about that. But I just need to be, I, I just want us to be, be careful and be mindful that we're not setting ourselves up by recommending something, which is good. Not saying that it's not, but we need to make sure that, that we're staying, you know, within the confines of the law.
And also the, the state, getting back to what the state mandates, going to inclusionary zoning. We used to have a redevelopment agency. We're talking about that, uh, for growth management, that, uh, you know, that there's, there's a certain requirement we have for providing housing or units, dwelling units, and whatever capacity for people of lower incomes. But then again, it takes away what we had prior, that we had a redevelopment agency. And that certainly was helping. Uh, so, I know it, it's a very difficult, we find ourselves in a very difficult position.
Exactly.
And some issues, uh, that, that, where we have state mandates. And yet, we're, we're just left on our own in a way to find out how we're going to deal with it and find solutions to these issues. Now, since you started.
If I could jump in through the chair, Chair Hughesway. I just wanted to clarify that this portion of the agenda was, in my opinion, at least intended for clarifying questions from the planning commissioners. Um, I think to some degree, you may have already started into discussion of some of these issues. And I know that there are at least four members of the public who've raised their hands wanting to speak. So, if I could, I would suggest that you, right now, try and wrap up any questions that commissioners have of me or staff. Then take it through comments, and there are now six hands raised, and there might be others. And then, once you've heard the comments, then you could go through these eight items one by one and try and bring closure to each of them. Give staff some guidance. For instance, if you want us to look more into the legalities of the new school funding, or if you're concerned about the inclusionary housing program when you get to that eighth item, we can, we can do those in turn. But I would suggest, again, that you wrap up questions, then take public comment, and then go through the eight items one by one. And then, as a ninth item, see if there are any other items that commissioners want to speak about.
Thank you, David. I, I certainly, I would be happy to proceed that way. I just wanted to, if I could just have a, just a response a little bit to what Commissioner Mora was referring to as retail leakage, which only take me a second. And this is what I want to see in the future. With the G-PAC recommendation, for example, create a summary of demographic and economic characteristics. Include strategies to make Hollister a more appealing location to those business types. Identify and market to potential businesses. My question is, who? Who's going to do it? An implementation mandate specific ways, responsibilities, assignments to individuals. I think that it's important to encourage proposed projects in downtown to incorporate experiential retail and entertainment opportunity, opportunities to bolster downtown as a regional destination. Question, how? So, I mean, these are, we're going to still have time to deliberate on this as Placeworks takes this to the next step when we define what the implementation measures are. That was, just wanted to finish on the comment that Mr. Mora brought up. Any other questions or comments relating to the?
On the retail leakage, this is Commissioner Fernandez. I have lived here off and on about twenty years. I have worked in Salinas, San Jose, King City. I never want to buy something right after work. I like to come home and shop. But really, the only thing still to this day that I buy here on a regular basis is groceries at Lucky's. Clothes, shoes, anything else. You go to Gilroy or you go, I, I was born in Salinas, so my preference is Salinas. And I know that we have to build a certain amount of housing. But it's one of those things where you do need some other stores. Because, you know, if my daughter wants a dress for the prom or whatever, we're going to Salinas. And if you want to buy a really good pair of shoes, you have Big Five. Nothing wrong with that, but if you're looking for something in particular, a dress shoe, I had to go to Salinas. Everything you want is that or it's Amazon. So, and as far as what Commissioner Mora said, I understand what we're trying to do here, but I think we do need to acknowledge the public. If someone does bring up something, because, I mean, look at the way it's been for the last couple of years. It just seems like everything is done in secret, or, you know, it's a closed meeting. And I'm still new to all this, and I get to listen to you guys talk and go, okay, I had a question, but you've answered about ten of them that I was thinking about. You keep answering them, which is great for me. But there are people out there that, I, I understand what we're doing, but we do really need to consider that some people have no idea what we're talking about. And they're learning, and it's a good thing for them to learn. But I, I do like the clarification, you know, we're talking about eight points, and then we can move on. I mean, I agree with that. But the retail leakage, I have a lot of friends that, that work out from their home. Nobody wants to get off at work at five, six, and then go to Target or the pet store. My cats only use a particular food that I can only get in Gilroy and Salinas. Because our pet store is too small. We should get a PetSmart or something. So, part of that isn't that you don't want to, it's that you, you can't, you can't find anything.
Yeah.
So, that's my point of view.
Roxanne, did you have any comments or questions?
Yes, just really quick, because the comments are really, I was going to ask some questions about Mr. Early's presentation, but I'm going to skip it, because I, I don't think that it, after the discussion that we've had, I'm not sure that it's as important as moving on and hearing from the public. And I just want to say that, uh, that I fully agree that we have to be as open as we can with the public and everybody. And all this information needs to be available in different ways. Um, and this is not the only way. However, I do worry when we put an announcement out to the public that a meeting starts and ends at a certain time, that we go past that time. Because I think that it, it shows, maybe, it, it shows, it may challenge some, keep some of our public to stay longer. I know that the comment that Commissioner Huboy said earlier about, like, planning commission meetings going on, like, to eleven or twelve midnight. I know that when we did that, I heard a lot of complaints from the public saying, there is just no way that they could sit through a four, five, six hour meeting after having been at work all day and then dealt with kids right after work. Or whatever stuff is going on at home, if there's no kids at home. But I just want us to be respectful that we put out, that we published a, a certain time. So, so I think that we, as members of this commission, have to keep our comments as concise and focused as possible and be, you know, prepared to address the issues that are before us. And balance the need to be thorough and give enough time to get the information out there. And balance that with the need to be respectful of time that we publish, so that people aren't feeling like it's nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night, and they're still sitting through a, a public meeting that they had not planned to. So, I agree that we have to be available, and I think we need to balance that with respecting people's time and, and just being realistic that our general public cannot sit through four or five hour meetings. Although I do know that as commissioners, there's times that we have to do it, but we do that, knowing that on that third, fourth, and fifth hour, we're going to lose a big majority of the public. So, I just want us to keep that in mind as we're moving through this, and we try to be more, you know, focused about our comments. And that's all, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Roxanne.
I have a quick question, Mr. Prodigy. Is, is, was there an end time to this meeting that was posted?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Mora.
Because I only see a start time.
It is a start time at this time. I think it was just discussed at the hopeless, uh, two and a half hours or so, but it's only a start time.
Yeah, because I've never seen a, a city council or a commission meeting or a board of supervisors meeting have an end time to it. Uh, I've, I've always only seen a start time. So, I do understand what Commissioner Stevens is saying, but I, I, I'm, that's why I was a little baffled, what, where we're coming up with this eight thirty hard stop time.
Right, and, and I'll just clarify, I, we, when we did our G-PAC meetings, that was kind of the, the normal time, that we, it was six to two, um, eight thirty. So, yeah, I apologize, I did not mean that this meeting was scheduled to end at eight thirty. I'm saying that that's kind of what we've been doing in G-PAC. And I just, just want to caution us that when we've had those marathon four or five hour meetings, that we have lost the public. And so, in, in an effort to try to be as transparent, we've kind of done the opposite. So, I just want us to balance out the need to be open with also respecting the public's time.
Agreed. Any other comments or questions from the commission? David, that concludes our comments and questions. Are we ready to open it up to the public hearing?
That would be my recommendation. Of course, it's up to you as the chair.
I will now open up the public hearing at twenty minutes to eight. Abraham, uh, can you announce the speakers who are raising their hands?
Yes.
From the general public.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will do that right now, and we will start with the first one. And that is Rob Rodriguez.
And can I just clarify, Abraham, is there a time limit of any sort?
Yes, thank you for that, David. So, we do have a time limit of three minutes. That, again, the planning commission, if anybody from the audience does require additional timing, usually that, that is up to the planning commission. But our standard timing for public comment is three minutes. Thank you for that.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is, uh, Rob Rodriguez. Here I am again. And here we all are, less than four months from when I asked the G-PAC committee if we could wait three months, or if three months would be too long to wait to hold these meetings in person. We're talking about going over the draft now and putting finishing touches on it, when we're just a few weeks away from California dropping all restrictions to meet in person. And, um, I think that we should be starting the process, not, uh, not talking about things that are already established. I'm a little concerned with David Early's eagerness to push it through and get his team paid and meet virtually, uh, instead of their commitment to, you know, uh, creating lasting community change, which I think Placeworks will agree that's, that's what they're there to do. You know, I only know of this meeting and that it's happening, that these, these, the public input is allowed because David Huboy and myself are a member of the Green Committee with San Benito County Chamber, uh, not because Placeworks sent out an email or my city government reached out and said that this, this is happening today. I think these meetings are far too important for our community to overlook. And I think that that's what's happening with the people who have been selected to, uh, to represent us in this, uh, in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Our second speaker is John Rovell. John, can you hear us? John, you are on mute?
I'm trying.
Okay, there you go. We can hear you now.
Okay, so I wanted to, uh, discuss a little bit this time concept. I wasn't going to talk about it initially. However, you're allowing me three minutes. I've sat here for an hour and forty-three minutes, um, just listening. Uh, I sat through many of the G-PAC meetings and listened. And unfortunately, not understanding necessarily how those things were constructed, I did not get a chance to put in my input, although there was time later for me to put, uh, input in, uh, through the websites and what have you. So, a couple, I have four things on my list here. Sales tax leakage is clearly primarily because most of the people who live in Hollister, uh, work out of, outside of the community. When they need something, they stop by the store on their way home or at lunchtime and purchase their items, or they buy it from, on the web. If everybody was buying stuff here, the stores would have the things folks want to buy. Uh, under arts and culture, now, this seems to blend considerably with the historical and cultural resources. I think those things should be combined. And I think that, uh, one of the discussions when at G-PAC was talking about in Arts and Culture Center, that center definitely needs to include both the library and the historic museum. And, and in conjunction with that, there needs to be both administrative and financial cooperation, both the city and the county, to help make those things be successful. So, based on the recent census, the twenty twenty census, California lost a congressional representative due to a lack of growth. This plan seems to be based on increasing population, as it appears, uh, that, that this population may hold steady or even decrease. Uh, this is seemingly ignored. Uh, there needs to be some pushback, uh, on, on the growth requirements, uh, at the state level from our city and everybody else in California. They're, they're telling us what we have to do in terms of housing and what have you else. And, and it's just not right for that to happen. These are privately owned pieces of property, and the government shouldn't get to tell people what and how to do with their states. And on a different, a different, uh, subject, uh, we, we talked about industrial growth. And unfortunately, we seem to have limited it to the area around the airport and the industrial park. These are somewhat constraining potentially for companies that may need more ground than that or, or need to work with a, a different kind of area than what may be available. And I think that there needs to be some room in this general plan for that larger industrial growth to happen. And we have to also remember that this is for twenty years from now. So, if we fill it up with a lot of little pieces and, uh, little bits, uh, and those mom and pops for, you know, eight or ten people, yeah, that always helps with the taxes and everything else. But it, it isn't the kind of growth industrially that we need to put people to work. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Rovell. The next speaker is Ariel Goodspeed. Ariel, if you unmute yourself, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Ariel Goodspeed. I work with the County San Benito Planning Department. I also am a resident of the city of Hollister. As such, I find that, um, the success of the Hollister General Plan update to be very important. Um, so, I wanted to specifically address sensitive habitats. Specifically, the recommendations provided in the letter dated on April thirty from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And I just wanted to highlight a few key aspects of that letter. One was that U.S. Fish and Wildlife, um, said that they have not formally assessed the cumulative effect of the development on the California Red Lake and Frogger, California Tiger Salamander and the critical habitat units across the planning area. In addition, they noted that the areas of the planning area, which encompass critical habitat for the California Red Lake and Frogger and California Tiger Salamander lie completely outside of the current city limits of Hollister. The policy options memorandum does not address how these policy options would be implemented in currently unincorporated areas of San Benito County. In the recommendation, they asked that the city of Hollister coordinate on proposed conservation policies with the County of San Benito, um, as these, uh, critical habitats lie in the unincorporated areas. And that they also recommend that they coordinate with, uh, CDFW and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So, I just wanted to note that, um, city staff had five meetings with, uh, county, um, with the county. None of these were, uh, this specific item was not addressed. Um, in addition, the county, um, has applied for a federal grant under section six to put together, uh, countywide habitat conservation plan and, uh, natural community conservation plan. In that effort, um, we have developed an ad hoc committee and have asked, uh, city planning staff to be on, um, that ad hoc committee to make sure that, um, all jurisdictions are at the table to adequately address critical habitat. I think that at the end of the day, um, both the city of Hollister and the county have the same goals. But I think that the only way to truly achieve, um, uh, dealing with critical habitat is, uh, by coordinating across the jurisdiction. So, I ask that the city council please have, um, before anything, any, um, policy recommendations are approved, that they have to coordinate with the County of San Benito. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ariel.
Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Goodspeed. Our next speaker is Robin Poller.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, good evening. I'm back again to discuss Park Hill. I should, I'm hoping that you'll put it in the historical and cultural column instead of the multi-residential column. I am hearing whispers that there's a talk of putting apartments up on top of Park Hill and Park Hill should be saved for future generations. I'm not going to be here much longer, but I want to know it's protected. There's, I'm hoping this, the last general plan, the the city buildings up there were identified as multi-residential and we rallied folks to save it and to have that removed. And forty people went down at the draft to the city council and requested that that not be multi-residential. And so the city council eventually, or they removed it from being multi-residential and said it was the consultant had, didn't realize that. So I'm hoping that we're not going to have to do the same thing and rally the troops and all go down to city council and beg and plead that Park Hill is identified as a historical site. I think that's all I have to say. I love all the other work you're doing and keep it up. I want to have more low-income housing in our area. It's just Park Hill's not the right place. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Our next speaker is Lee Shahinian. Mr. Shahinian, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you very much, Abraham and commissioners, for this opportunity to speak. In the G-PAC meetings I have attended, rail transportation has been touched on in passing. With the general plan vision extending to nineteen to twenty forty, should passenger rail connection to Gilroy be given more attention and consideration? Such rail connection would decrease auto congestion, support environmental goals, and improve access between Silicon Valley and Hollister. An existing example is communities in the Hudson River Valley having rail links to New York City. Rail has been touched on in the G-PAC meetings, but does not seem to be a core issue under consideration. I think it should be a serious consideration for a twenty forty vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Shahinian. Our next speaker is Joe Tenasha. Mr. Tenasha, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Joe Tenasha. I'm a businessman and property owner in San Benito County in the city of Hollister. I do not have social media whatsoever, so it's pretty good for me to even be on here. But I do, with my wife, own two retail businesses in town, one clothing and one food. And I can talk to you for a year about leakage. But a couple of things that, I don't know if this is the right place to talk about them, but the services that are going to be provided, we need to get a definite fill-in of the infrastructure we have right now with the properties that are currently residential or whatever to the city limits getting in-filled before we're jumping over things such as out there, Union and South Side, out there where the old hospital and the ag offices are, we, the counties build places out there. And there's a lot of empty space from Lad Lane over over to those houses that should be filled in. And I noticed on the on the Union Road option that some of it's filled in with the housing and some of it's going to be kept in agriculture on the south side of Union Road. And that doesn't work. Ag and housing does not work together, especially this day of age with food safety issues. It just doesn't work. You'd be better off letting people build the houses there and have a definite line, be it a road that's switches and and you're off, one side is housing and one side isn't. But it doesn't work and you're talking about keeping the orchards over there. Well, I am the orchards over there and I guarantee you I can't make a living on them. I already have a map and a plan trying to get it in place with the county and the city. Buena Vista area, you need to draw your lines and you need to hold to them and you need to infill. That North, North Gate Development, I have one piece of property that the line for the North Gate Development goes right through the twenty acres, which makes no sense at all. I think everybody needs to pay attention where the lines are and where the roads are and structure everything so there's not a lot of pushing back and forth at planning meetings and city council meetings trying to get things cleaned up. And that's a lot of what I see that could happen. But five acres, ten acres, you can't make a living on ag unless you're at high end with horses or something like that, racing or breeding stock. But I'd be more than happy to talk to individuals one-on-one. Feel free to get ahold of me. Some of you know how to get ahold of me. Love to talk to you about these areas. Retail, water is your other big issue. How you're going to handle it, I don't know. It'd be nice to be on, more people could get tied into the sewer plant to get rid of the septic systems in this county. I have property right next to the city limit that I can't get on septic, get on the sewer lines, and I'm on septic, which doesn't do anybody in this community any good. I'll just cut it right there. I think I've talked long enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Tenasha. Our next speaker is Mark Oganowski. Mark, can you hear us?
Hello, yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, hi, everybody. I'm Mark Oganowski. I'm a senior fish and wildlife biologist with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Thanks on behalf of my agency for for the the opportunity to provide provide our input to this process both during the meeting and via our comment letters. I'd just like to offer some brief comments regarding the sensitive habitats, proposed policy recommendations and and how those relate to the comment letter we submitted regarding those policy, the prior formulation of the sensitive habitats policies. And I also want to say that if if any of the commissioners want to want me to be available later, for example, Commissioner Hubei had a question about the first of those policies, I'd be happy to stick around and address those on the night out. But specifically regarding the second policy that begins, avoid development in areas with high-quality habitat. Our comment letter of April thirtieth proposed that as one potential way that the city could approach development in the California Tiger Salamander Critical Habitat area. Our general approach with with weighing in on land use plans is to provide sort of the scientific basis and some potential recommendations rather than to endorse a particular policy option. So I would say that, and perhaps we weren't clear in our letter, but I would say that in general, we're not endorsing an avoidance approach like this. It's, we appreciate the incorporation of our input very much, but an equal, an equally valid approach could be to permit development in some or all areas of critical habitat, again, in collaboration with San Bier County, as Ariel referred to earlier. But adjusting the mitigation that you would require depending on the quality of the habitat as assessed by a qualified biologist who who knows the species and who's who's qualified to understand the the quality of habitat for the species on a project site. So I would just recommend that that you consider that as an option, too. Happy to provide additional input, you know, offline or after this meeting on how you might sort through those. Maybe you could consider an approach whereby a project applicant could choose between limit, you know, avoiding the most sensitive areas of habitat on a parcel or completely developing the parcel but offering higher mitigate, a level of mitigation if they have a higher quality habitat parcel. And the last thing to consider is, and I think I mentioned this in our letter, protecting habitat and critical habitat really does depend on a site assessment. So even though that big critical habitat boundary identifies everything as critical habitat, the service always takes a case, case-by-case approach and looking at the specifics of the conditions on that property, but also on adjacent areas, because if habitat is fragmented, meaning it's developed here and there, even a good quality breeding pond for a tiger salamander on a project would be very valuable if it's surrounded by existing development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Oganowski. Our next speaker is Patricia Salsido. Patricia, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Pat Salsido with BIA Bay Area. Appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening and provide comment. I wish to comment on the new school funding policy that is before you this evening regarding the preparation of a specific plan that includes adequate voluntary developer funding as a precondition for development in new development areas. I want to restate that BIA Bay Area has significant concerns about the language within this policy and the intent, the intent of the policy. We did write a letter, March thirtieth. I know it is in the packet and I appreciate Placeworks including that in the packet of information for you to review. And I stated a number of things, also the California statute six five nine nine five. I want to reiterate, we have serious concerns. We will continue to voice those concerns. We see this as a definite impediment to the implementation of SB fifty and do not believe that the city has any authority to require or expect or intimate that there needs to be voluntary school fees above and beyond what is required in the statutes of the state of California. I also wanted to make some comments regarding inclusionary zoning. And I would say that under the inclusionary, we we struggle, all of us are struggling in providing housing, not just market rate, but also affordable. Mitigation fees are currently being paid by the market rate home builders throughout the Bay Area to the tune of millions of dollars. The issue of inclusionary for the development, the market rate development community really goes beyond just the simplistic statement of it impacts the profit margins of market rate developers. Funding today and financing for many home builders is through public, public corporations. They're no longer just the mom and pop developers. So we have to finance these projects. And when I see that in move fees are being recommended to be denied outright in single-family development as well as land dedication, which we all know land is one of the most expensive components for home building. And then off-site construction really ties the hands for providing unique opportunities to work with nonprofit builders to build more affordable housing, not less affordable housing. So we're very concerned about that recommendation as well. Thank you for your time this evening. It is very much appreciated.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Ms. Salsido. Our next speaker is Ann Hall. Ms. Hall, can you hear us? Hello, Ann, can you hear us? Hello, Ann? It looks like you're off mute, but we cannot hear you. Can you hear us? Maybe it's just with your microphone, Ms. Hall?
Come back to Ann, see if she can get online here.
Okay, Ann, we will, we will try to come back to you in a bit. Thank you. We're going to go to our next speaker is Jason Novo. Mr. Novo, can you hear us? Looks like you're on mute.
Hey, good evening, Abraham. Hope you and your family are doing well. Planning Commissioners, staff, Mr. Early, thank you so much for everything you're doing to continue the general plan update moving forward in a timely fashion. First, I do want to thank you on behalf of Nino Real Estate for incorporating our our sign in the diversity logo. I think that's tremendous. Second, and it's somewhat off the eight subject topic, but it is very germane to what's going on right now. We're, we're seeing a pretty good sizable shift in in the market. That's demonstrated by the amount of people that are moving away from cities to areas like Hollister and beyond. We're also seeing office space being underutilized because companies are offering the ability to work from home. So I'm wondering if, Mr. Early, if the general plan update is taking into consideration the impacts of COVID and how they are going to change the dynamics of commercial, office, industrial, housing while we hope things get back to normal by moving from out of the large cities but moving out of state. That change is on the horizon and I would hope that the general plan update would also take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Novo. Our next speaker is Carminder Brown. Ms. Brown, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I also appreciate all the efforts of this committee and the and Placeworks in moving forward on the Hollister General Plan Update. I'm with the San Benito Agricultural Land Trust and I wanted to comment on the section regarding agricultural mitigation. The San Benito Agricultural Land Trust wholeheartedly supports the two-to-one agricultural mitigation recommendation. Agricultural land in San Benito County, as well as the entire state of California, is both precious and also threatened. Just today, I read a policy paper stating that fifty thousand acres of agricultural land is lost in California every year. So we absolutely support the recommendation that we mitigate development at a rate of two-to-one so that we're not simply preserving half of our viable agricultural lands in San Benito County, which is such an important part of our local economy, our cultural, our culture and our heritage. We also would like to submit a question. I don't know if it can be addressed tonight or can just go in the comment section regarding the the information about the sphere of influence and the extension of sewer lines outside of the the City of Hollister's sphere of influence. We're particularly concerned about the proposal of extending sewer lines and services to the City of San Juan Batista because the land between San Juan Batista and Hollister is some of our best prime agricultural soils in this county. So we, you know, are wondering what that proposal entails and whether that's part of this general plan update. We would certainly hope that if such a sewer line is extended between Hollister and San Juan Batista, that it would follow closely along the lines of Highway one fifty-six and not, you know, cut through the agricultural lands to the north of Highway one fifty-six, which would take even more prime agricultural lands out of production. And that's all for my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carminder.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We will try to go back to Ms. Ann Hall. Hello, Ann, can you hear us? Looks like you're on mute now. Would you be able to unmute? See if we can hopefully hear you this time. Hello, Ann? It looks like it's still on mute on on your end. It looks like it's still on mute on your end, Ann.
Just so the audience knows, we have been sending instructions to Ms. Hall about how she might unmute herself. It looks like that hasn't worked, but we've certainly been trying to figure out a way to get her connected. So, Ms. Hall, it may also be possible for you to type into the chat and certainly if none of that works tonight, we would welcome comments from you. and certainly if none of that works tonight, we would welcome comments from you at another time. I at least apologize. I think all of us do that we can't make that work. But I do see that Ms. Hall is able to type into the chat. So, Ms. Hall, if you wanted to, you could type a comment at this time and we could read it for the record.
Thank you very much, David, for reaching out to, to help her solve the, the issue. We greatly appreciate it.
Oh, so Ms. Hall has asked if a copy of tonight's presentation will be available on the website and the answer to that is absolutely yes. We'll get it posted within the next day or so.
Thank you, David.
Ms. Hall, if you can hear me, if you're on the phone, try star nine to unmute yourself instead of star six. Ms. Hall, are you a 2766 number?
Hello, Ann, can you hear us now? It looks like we have you on, on the telephone, but it's still on mute. If you can dial star nine, if you can hear us.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there we go.
All right, success. I apologize. So thank you for being so patient. It was a combination of star nine and star six and, and in the right order. That seemed to do the trick. So I know, so I, yes, so I wanted to know if the slides would be available, which you said yes. And then I know there was a lot of discussion about multifamily housing and what, how it could be encouraged or how it could be required as part of single family housing projects, that there would be certain requirements, such a percentage has to be multifamily. I know it's beyond the scope of the general plan itself, but I, I feel maybe the general plan can at least make a recommendation to look at the fees associated with multifamily housing. Right now apartments, the, the building fees associated with apartments are equivalent to a single family house. And obviously the rate of return on an apartment is much less than a single family house. So it becomes punitive for a developer to build multifamily housing. And again, like I said, you are not setting fees, but it seems the general plan could maybe recommend to the city that they relook at how multifamily housing is assessed fees and it might make it more encouraging for developers to build multifamily housing. That was my comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you all to, to all the 10 speakers that spoke tonight. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If, if that is the case, please raise your hand now. Okay? Our next speaker is Jeffrey Small. Jeffrey, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the Commissioners tonight. My name is Jeffrey Small. I'm with Capital Public Finance Group. We are a financial advisor. We are here on behalf of the San Benito High School District and we've been working very closely with the General Plan Advisory Committee since its inception. We've had plenty of notice and opportunity to provide written comment and participate in small group discussions. I think we provided letters in March and then one in May, sort of detailing our concerns. And the, this high school district has some very real concerns about the amount of growth that, that is going on in the community. They simply do not have the, you know, the current high school is at capacity and I documented this quite well in, in some of the letters that, that you can look at. I don't know that I need to do that right here. But, you know, we appreciate, you know, every opportunity we have to, to work closely with, with, with the Commissioners, the city, with the developers. You know, anytime that there's an opportunity for the, for the high school district to negotiate in good faith, particularly when there's a, a request that goes on, you know, a particular requirement, the high school district certainly wants to be there. We do support the two policy options that are being recommended by, by GPAP. You know, we, we would like to, to talk to BIA and see if we can, you know, come to some, some reasonable conclusions whereby the city can actually thrive and a new high school can be built. Right now, the SB 50 fees only pay for about 11% of a new high school. And, you know, even if, even if the, you know, local constituents were willing to approve, you know, a bond for a new school, I mean, that, that would be, you know, grossly unfair. So we really want to sit down and work with everybody and see if we can come to a, a good workable solution. So with that, I, I thank you for your time and effort. We look forward to continuing on with this process and working close with all stakeholders involved.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you, Mr. Small. That is the last speaker that had its hand raised, Mr. Chair. It is up to you if you wanna now close it or ask if there's anybody else who's interested?
Is there anyone else in the virtual audience who would care to address the planning commission?
If, if I could, while we're waiting, just mention quickly that Sarah Steiner just wrote and mentioned in the chat, I think most of you have seen that, but I'll just read it. It's very short. She says, "Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. Important to keep our eye on the prize, sustainable rural agricultural community that maintains its diversity."
Thank you for that, David. And there are no other hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with no other hands raised, I will close the public hearing now at 8:18.
So through the chair, if I could just quickly, my recommendation to you procedurally, and of course it's up to you, would be that we go back to the eight items that I did the presentation about, that you would take them one by one and get any guidance on each of those eight. And there may be none on some of them. There may be extensive guidance on others. That will all be fine. And then, once you've done that, you could ask if other Commissioners want to bring up any of the other 15 items and/or 16 items, including cannabis, and if so, have a discussion about each of those as well. And I do want to say, just for the record, I, of course, am willing to stay as long as this takes. We're also happy to come back for another meeting if it's appropriate. I in no way suggested that we would want to cut the public debate short. It's very important to have public discussion about these items.
Very well. So we'll start with the new school funding topic. Have some discussion on that. I, I agree with, with Commissioner Moore was saying about the legality issue. I'd like to, to see if we can get legal counsel to weigh in on the SB 50 and the requirement for the special plan and see if, make sure that there's not going to be any backlash or, or conflicts regarding that.
And if I could, and I certainly don't want to monopolize discussion, I really appreciated Mr. Small's comment on behalf of the school district and his willingness to perhaps have a meeting between the school district's consultants and the BIA and perhaps with some legal counsel there as well to see if we could get a consensus about what is legally possible. I'd certainly be happy to be part of that. And then we could come back maybe directly to the city council with guidance to be able to answer those questions.
Okay. Great. Any other comments from the commission on new school funding?
Just real quick, I know at the beginning of this presentation, I believe it was said that this has been challenged, but not successfully? Or did I not hear that correctly?
No, I did not mean to say that. I'm not aware of a legal challenge to this. What I do know is that there are several cities in Northern California that have similar policies in place and they have, they, they have not been successfully challenged, which is to say that they continue to stand. I do not know if they have ever been challenged, period, or if they're simply unchallenged or if they have been challenged and a court has ruled in favor of them. But I do know that despite being on the books for, for multiple decades, they have continued to exist. And one of the things I can do is look into that and get some examples of when it, where it has happened in other cities and how they have worked, if they have had legal challenges and how they've worked with that. I'm happy to get that information as well.
That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, David.
Yeah, definitely. You know, when it comes to new school funding, obviously it'd be great if, you know, the state would, would chip in to, to help all local jurisdictions, even though we have a, I could have the figure incorrect, but even though we have, I believe, a $75 billion surplus in the state of California. It's sad, sad to see that we're not using that money for things like new schools or, you know, it seems like, and not to say that some of the ways that our surplus, taxpayer surplus funds are being spent is, is inappropriate or shouldn't happen, but we all know that school, school funding is, is not where it needs to be. And, you know, hopefully we can reach out to our, not just local elected officials, but our state representatives in this, in, in both houses and encourage them to create some kind of, maybe, maybe cosponsor a bill that will help increase some of this. You know, I'm curious to see, and I know it's outside of the, the, probably the preview of GPAP, but I, I wonder if, if during this topic, the new school funding, if it was ever discussed of how exactly the funding was acquired for Christopher High School. Because I know that there's, there's, I, I've heard conflicting stories, you know, that it was 100% private funding by the Christopher family and I heard it was partial, partial private funding, some public funding. Wondering if that's something that GPAC has discussed to say, you know, have, have we looked at potentially trying to acquire some private funding for a new school? I mean, obviously the high school is, is, is large. I have two, three kids that have gone to the high school. One graduated this year and, yeah, it's, it's, you know. But unfortunately, you know, I, I, I don't believe that, that the public is going to, with obviously the last school bond that, that got shot down, I, I think people are tired of, of paying for, for school bonds, you know, even though it's a good thing. You know, can't go backwards and fix some of the errors. Should a second high school have been considered years ago? Most definitely. But unfortunately it didn't happen. So now we gotta kind of deal with the consequences of that until, you know, we either get more people to support bonds or we can figure out another way to get some revenues. But hopefully, maybe we can look into the private funding part. Maybe we have like a generous donor out there, you know, like the Christopher family, you know. You know, I know that there's some longtime Hollister families here who could potentially maybe try to recruit or convince maybe to donate some, some funds, because it's, it's very expensive to build a school. And yeah, you know, the property taxes revenue is not gonna, it's not gonna support that. So, yeah.
I can answer a little bit of that, just from a very quick web search. The Christopher family did dedicate 10 acres of land for Christopher High School and it's not unusual for a large landowner, particularly if they're also a developer. And I'm not saying Mr. Christopher is, but it's not at all unheard of to get a land donation for a school. Mr. Christopher, the Christopher family on top of that did donate $75,000 towards a school endowment. But that is by no means enough to close the funding gap for the construction of a school. Mr. Small perhaps could verify this if, if the Chair desires, but I believe the shortfall is more on the order of 10 to 30 million dollars. And while $75,000 is of course a very generous donation, it doesn't come close to closing that funding gap.
And when it comes to these policies, requirements as versus or compared to incentives, I'm always curious, I'm always more willing to embrace an incentive policy. But I'm, I'd like to see when we, we fine tune this new school funding, the zoning flexibilities, when we're talking about setbacks, building heights, parking flexibility, maybe density bonuses, can we, can we be a little more specific? This is like a smorgasbord of different ideas we're tossing out here. I'd like to see, and maybe staff, you can work with Placeworks on, on exactly, what do you think would be a workable incentive for policy to, to work with developers and voluntary contributions based on incentives? Be a little more specific on that. I would appreciate that. Anything else on new school funding? Okay, let's, let's talk about farmland mitigation. And I think, by the way, there was comments from Carminder Brown and others that were very, very productive and, and showed some insight on, on some of these issues. And the, the other person, I forget his name, who was saying that we need to identify, the mitigation is based on the quality of habitat. I thought that was an interesting comment coming from the general public there on sensitive habitats. But going back to the farmland mitigation, the ratio of one to two, any, any comments, direction that we can give Placeworks on that?
We need the farmland. I mean, I hate to see us turn into one of those towns where, you know, we grow nothing.
If you look at our, our current land use map, there's really not a lot of agricultural land within the city limits to speak of. You know, right road and there, but there's really not much left. So I think with that said, I think that becomes more of an important issue because we're running out of it here in the city and it's nice to have farmland, some farmland. Although we've heard some other comments from Joe regarding the compatibility of orchard land and, and housing. I think that we need to look into that a little bit more on, when we're talking about the Union Road special study area. I just don't want to overlook, you know, some measures if we're, if we're trying to, and I've always liked to, to drive by Union Road and, and see the orchards. But, you know, I've got an open mind. I'm not the one who, who has to take care of those trees. But, but I mean, just for the, it's a scenic, it can be a more of a scenic route there actually, you know, based on some infrastructure improvements on Union Road. But going back to the farmland mitigation, are there any comments from my fellow Commissioners on that one? I think we got that one pretty well.
I mean, I agree with you that, you know, with, with, if you guys said that we do need to preserve farmland, but the, at the same time, I, I kind of don't want to restrict landowners, you know, enforce them to, to, you know, to say, oh, you have to, you have to grow something or nothing. I, I think that, that's, that's wrong. You know, you know, if you own something, you should be able to, not say do anything you want with it, but if you want to sell a piece of land that you've been maybe having some orchards or growing some agriculture, then maybe it's not profitable because I, I keep hearing a lot of people make, make general comments about how they want to keep, you know, agricultural land here. I definitely agree, you know. But at the same time, we, we need to think about the business owner and the landowner. Is, are they making? Are they making a profit, you know, or is it a struggle for them to survive? And you know, it's, it's, it's easy for us who, that's not how we make our living, to tell somebody how they should run their business or take care of their land. Because there's no financial consequence for us. So I'm very sensitive when it comes to that. I think, you know, there's a lot of land in the county that, that's dedicated for agricultural. I, I, I really, really do not like, yeah, I, I don't own land myself, so I'm not speaking as a landowner, but, or farmer. But I think, I think we really need to be very careful of restricting property owners, you know.
I, I was, I'm glad you brought your mentioning that because that was one of my first comments when we first discussed it at G-PAC, was farmland that's been in family for a long time. And in, when we're saying two to one, it's almost, you know, you're, you're, you're asking these families that had this farmland and they're looking at generations to come and asking them to pretty much give up development rights, you know, to preserve this land. But then, in, in the grand scheme of things, you know, it's, it's the common good. Someone could argue it's, it's based on more of a common good than, than the, the landowner and his, 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 his rights and his vision to keep the land in the family. I think that, I'd like to see if there was, in some circumstances, if there were some, an avenue for that scenario to be respected for a landowner who, who's had this farmland for, maybe it's gone in for generations. And this is his vision. And so I think, you know, we need to, to consider that, at least give him some consideration to what his vision is for his family's, family too, for the generations to come.
Yeah, you know, or a facility.
Oh, commission, oh, can I just jump in? Just a little bit. I was, I mean, I'm like, I'm sorry a little bit to find a good spot to, to get into the conversation because I'm on Zoom. I, I know that makes it a little bit more difficult. But I just wanna just make a comment about, I'm just remembering the discussion that we had during G-PAC about this item. And I remember particularly around the orchards. And I think that the discussion that we were having was really about the nostalgia of, of having like that, that small town kind of farm feel to our city. But I don't know that we put enough consideration around the landowner and what their desire is. And I, and I, and I think that what I would feel more comfortable with is there, if there was some greater flexibility. I think especially because we are talking about in the city limits of Hollister. I'd maybe be more realistic in keeping the, that feel is really about what's happening in the county lands and, and agriculture. Because I do thi, I do think, or I can say, I can understand how it would be difficult to make a living in a small orchard like the ones that are on Union Road. If that landowner wants to do something different with that land in an, in an effort to, you know, provide better for their family, I don't know that we should stand in their way from, from doing that, right? So I, I'm kind of like rethinking some of the, the comments that I made during our G-PAC meeting around the orchards, especially those on, on Union Road. And, and I, and I do think that we need to consider being more flexible around the zoning in those areas.
If I could, could I just try and clarify a couple of points, and I may be missing something here, but through the chair, would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I guess I just, I want to verify or restate that the, the suggestion that Commissioner Stevens just mentioned regarding the orchards on Union is one of the items I mentioned under number seventeen on this slide, special planning areas. And it was intended to be only to try to find ways to preserve some of the trees of the orchards along Union, not necessarily to preserve agricultural uses there, nor to preserve all the trees. But with an understanding that development would move forward in that area north of Union. There are also in the special planning area discussions, and you'll come to that when you get to number seventeen. There are two areas, both along Buena Vista and along Union, that the G-PAC did propose for maintenance to be maintained as agricultural. And if you want to, to address that, I would suggest that you do it when you get to number seventeen and not here under farmland mitigation. When it comes to farmland mitigation, we are talking about lands that would need to be mitigated, that are prime or other unique and important farmlands. Mitigation would be required if those were inside the city. And future lands might be annexed into the city as well. But as, and Carminder Brown has just put this in the chat also, any lands that were mitigated, that is, that, that had development restrictions put on them, that would be done on a strictly voluntary basis by the landowner. The landowner, the, the developer would pay for those development rights from a landowner who would voluntarily sell the development rights. And they would be turned over to, in this case, the, the, the agency that's overseeing the program, who by the policy would be an outside nonprofit agency. They would then own the development rights. But the development rights could only be taken, so to speak, from a seller who would sell them voluntarily. And those would almost certainly be outside the city. We will have to work out the details of exactly where they need to be. I think they would need to be in San Benito County and perhaps even within a certain distance of the city of Hollister. But they would be voluntary sellers of those development rights who would be outside the city and who would have an ongoing agricultural operation. So nobody who had a development project and wanted to do that development project would be required to give up the right to do that. And I think that, I hope that addresses some of the comments from some of the commissioners.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything else on farmland mitigation? Okay, let's go to sensitive habitat. And I, I did make a comment there that, that I appreciate from the public regarding the mitigation based on the quality of habitat, which it, it does make sense after the biologic survey from a qualified biologist. That kind of clarified some of the questions that I had regarding that. Any comments from?
No.
On?
I do appreciate.
Sensitive habitats?
It was, it was Mark, Mark Oganowski who, who made those comments. Definitely appreciate that because I, I was under the, the impression, possibly is some, some of my colleagues were that, like, no development should, should occur whatsoever. You know, if, if there's a, you know, surrounding critical habitat. I'm glad they cleared it up and said that they're not recommending that just regarding sensitive habitat. So that, that I was good to hear because I was thinking, you know, all or nothing. So it was good.
Yeah, I, I do know that there, there, if you want to develop in, in an area where there is sensitive habitat, that it's, it's, it's not an easy procedure at all. There's a lot of approvals and takes a lot of time and study and survey before any, you can even consider any type of development in a sensitive habitat area. So I'm glad to get the way in from the wildlife fishing game on that. There's not any comments from my fellow commissioners on sensitive habitats? What about, let's go to the traffic level of service. I found it interesting, you know, with the presentation there that on level of service is that, that sometimes you would think and that a good intersection would be level C or less. You know, traffic flowing, have a good traffic flow without much delays. But actually, that may not be a good thing, especially in the context of where we're considering it, like in the downtown area. Because if you have a free flow traffic in that, like on Fourth and San Benito, it, it, there's, it creates some issues with other multimodal access and pedestrian access. And that, and, and I totally agree with the presentation on, on level service D as being acceptable based on the context of where that intersection is. So I found that, to me, that the learning process on my, and to reconsider that. Any, any comments on level service?
No, it was explained pretty well. I liked it.
Okay, it was good. All right, so let's go to growth management. Yeah, you know, growth management and wastewater, water treatment, you know, again, they're, they're, they're related because the city is the provider, okay, for itself and the unincorporated areas. And then we had, you know, we, we were, we were shown that with the memorandum of nineteen, I think it was nineteen, two thousand, oh, gosh, two thousand sixteen. You know, it is, it created a Hollister urban area that was in or outside the sphere of influence. So we were thinking that if, as long as it's in the Hollister urban area, you know, we're gonna provide your wastewater. Well, that's not gonna be happening anymore. And it makes to me, it, it makes sense, you know, it really does, that we really need to be concerned about that. Because I still remember the moratorium that we went through. You know, how long that moratorium lasted? Almost like ten years or so, nine years, I think? Based on the, based on thinking that, you know, wastewater, our wastewater treatment plant was sufficient and infrastructure is basically in the ground, unseen and taken for, taken for granted. So now I think we've learned from there. We have to be very careful with our wastewater, who we're gonna, how we're gonna provide it and the sustainability of our wastewater treatment plant. Because I know we're gonna have to go through some upgrades in the future. So I, I thought that, you know, the presentation on growth management, I'm, I didn't have any, any issues with that other than the comments that I'm making. I'm just, those are my comments. Jose?
Well, no.
I know why they keep asking me to stay up here for sixteen years because I'm doing something right.
I know you might. You're definitely doing something right, you know.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I do my homework.
Yeah, no, no, it's good. You know, and, and that's actually something that, that I didn't take into consideration regarding the growth manager was the waste management, wastewater treatment, you know, services that we provide. And how, and I, I, I'm not sure if it's, if they've come to an agreement yet with the potential of, of letting San Juan Batista tap in, you know, and service them.
You're right.
You know, and, and, and I'm sorry if I, you know, for not giving credit to, to the speaker that, that brought this up on how it would just disturb.
That was Carminder Brown that, that brought that up with the wastewater impact on the agricultural lands.
Yeah, I didn't even.
I know, I know the, the mayor has some, some insight on that. I wish, you know, when this goes to the city council, I'm sure he'll, he'll have some insight that, that be happy to, he'll be happy to share with us regarding where we are with San Juan Batista in cooperation with, on the wastewater. Did you, you remember what the mayor's had to say, Abraham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I, my understanding is that San Juan Batista did come before the city council to make a proposal during a report session of an agenda. It must have been at least a month ago. And the, you remember that, Commissioner Moore? Yeah. And my understanding was that there was a consensus that the city council wanted to continue exploring this, this possibility. There hasn't been, that I, that I know of a formal determination at this time, but they are exploring that possibility of, of helping that connection occur with San Juan Batista at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Roxanne, any comments on the growth management?
No, thank you.
Okay. How about the special planning areas? I think we're looking pretty good, although that we did have some comments on the Union Road with the orchards there that were, kind of brought that into the, the arena again of discussion regarding the orchard land and housing. I'd like to, I'd like to look into that some more.
Yeah, you know, and, and the one thing that, that I hope we take into consideration, not just us up here, but G-PAC and as well as other stakeholders is, you know, you know, how, 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 how land is actually used. If it's just been vacant and just sitting there for a longest time and it hasn't been, even though maybe considered agricultural land, but if, if no one has been growing anything there for, for a long time, then maybe we need to, to look at, at the possibility of maybe a mixed use, you know, development there, you know. You know, we, we can't just be focused on just doing things just one way just because that's the way we've done it.
Right.
But, you know, because, because I do see, you know, vacant land is just, just a pile of dirt. It doesn't do anything. I don't see anything grown there at all. I've been here for almost ten years and it's like, well, how come they're not doing anything? So I think we need to really make sure that even though it may be in that area where we consider agricultural that, that we don't, just don't put like a blanket statement, you know, a policy for everything. Because then, you know, I, I don't know if it's gonna happen, but I've heard a potential mixed use development, you know, possibly on, on Union Road potentially. You know, so it's like, hey, it's exciting. Because I know some, some of the people that live in that area, those, some of those new houses, they're like, that'd be great, you know, if we can get something. You know, like I said, it's just rumors. I don't know if it's how accurate it is. But I, I think with some of that vacant land, we should be using it and, and potentially generating maybe some sales tax revenue.
Yeah, I think mixed use makes sense down there. It, it does, when you have a mixed use opportunity, especially down in the southeastern area, it gives you an opportunity to, actually to, to actually get on a bike or walk to a convenience store for a coffee or newspaper or, you know.
You know, you get a lot of people coming in town off of one fifty-six. They could just make a quick stop or maybe they're heading out of town.
Right, and for the people that live there to actually lower the carbon footprint of that area based because we have mixed use. And we, we're looking at strategic areas where we can plan little commercial nodes or mixed use areas that would be helpful to lower our, our communal carbon footprint.
Exactly.
So I think that, that's, that was, that part of the Union Road study area is, to me, I think, makes a lot of sense. I think we're, we're on a good path there. It's driving down Union Road, you know, looking at the orchards, you know, looking at the trees, very nice. I mean, I, I love, I love that, you know, I, I love that. But we also need to get a better grasp, I think, sometimes on how the, these land areas, with the compatibility of the surrounding uses, the synergy of how these land, land area uses play together in harmony. So it's good to have people that work the land and people that take care of the trees. We want to, we want, and what just Joe Tonaska, we welcome what they have to say because, you know, I'm sitting in a, in a, in an office designing things. Well, it's good. Sometimes it's other things that aren't, aren't so more tedious. But I want to hear because I, I, I really want to know what, what it really takes from the people that actually are involved in the process of agriculture and trees and orchards and, and making sure we're on, we're doing the right thing here. Because I, I don't really know that much about it. White collar architect, you know, and I don't know what to, but, but good, it's good. I really appreciate that public hearing there, public comments from Joe and, and I guess he owns, he owns orchard land over there.
Quite a, quite a bit, yeah.
So that, that to me was.
Through the chair, if I could, just to clarify the request here. I think that we will, for the area north of Union Road, we will work at looking at the extent to which it's feasible to preserve orchard trees in those areas as part of a development. I want to clarify again, we're not expecting that those trees would remain in active agriculture. They would be preserved as landscaping essentially, but we will look into the feasibility of that. And that would also apply to the area south of Union Road, along Airline Highway, that we're shown as a possible mixed use area. And then for the remainder of the area south of Union Road and also for the Buena Vista area, we'll do some talking perhaps with the Agricultural Land Trust and with some agricultural experts about the viability. and with some agricultural experts about the viability of those sites for ongoing agriculture to ensure that we're not consigning them to, to neither development nor active agricultural use.
That's really good.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that.
Um, so Commissioner, who, wait, can I ask a quick question? So I'm not sure, um, it's early if the, um, Meridian, so the Meridian Street that we want, that we, where we had the discussion about connecting it all the way to Fairview, not sure if it was under special planning or if it was under, uh, some other category. Uh, is it under special planning or is it under?
That is, it is part of the special planning.
Okay, so let, so let me ask my question then. Um, so I, I remember during our discussion, we talked about that and there was a little bit of disagreement about whether or not to open that up and to make a, you know, a, a thoroughfare there through to Fairview. And I think ultimately majority, uh, voted to, 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 to open it. But I do remember as part of the discussion, and I wanted to get some clarification from you about that, uh, around the timing, that that would only happen under certain, when something else happened. And I'm not remembering what that was, and I'm just wondering if you could clarify that for me. Is that only when further development would happen in that area? Was that only when, uh, something was going on with, uh, street planning with the city? I'm just trying to remember what that was and I'm not remembering.
I, I appreciate your question very much because that, that, that exact item was one, I think the one that my staff and I had the least clarity about. And we went back to the, to the recording of the meeting, we went back to the notes. Um, and I will ask Carrie Stone, who's with me, to see if she has any other comments, but I think in the end, that what we decided was that it, it was the consensus of the group to put the road through. And I don't think there was any trigger, um, time wise, Commissioner Stevens. The one thing, and I don't know if, if staff could go back to the map, it would be about six slides further backwards, yeah, going in that direction. Um, it would be the first map that we would come to and one more back. Um, the one thing that strikes me is that, that the roadway as shown does, it's not straight through. Meridian on the west side is slightly farther south than Meridian on the east side. And there might have been some discussion about a jog at Prater, that, that Meridian would go straight into Prater a little bit south. And then if you wanted to continue through, you would have to jog, go north a little tiny bit on Prater and then go right again to continue on Meridian. That would make it not be a, a straight route through and perhaps make it a little less desirable. The traffic circle that we drew is intended to have that same effect. And I'm not sure there was clear guidance on that, but I want to absolutely underscore that this was the item that the, the overall discussion about was, was the least decisive of all of the G-PAC work. And if the commission wanted to give different guidance about that roadway configuration, I would certainly welcome it, but, but we did do our best possible job based on what we think the commission, what the G-PAC said, which was to put the roads through without a particular time trigger and with the roundabout and without a jog. Carrie, do you want to add anything to that or can you just confirm if I, if I'm saying that correctly?
You, you are saying that correctly and, um, I think there was debate between the jog and the traffic circle, so there was, there was not total clarity on that idea.
I think ultimately the, the, the goal was that we don't um, create a thoroughfare which would bring in, uh, traffic, like especially speedy traffic through. So anything that would, um, slow the traffic down, uh, was what we wanted, but I don't know that we made a decision around exactly what that would be. But I think ultimately it's really around having some way to get all the way through Meridian, but discouraging speeders from going through there, right? So that, I think that was what we ultimately wanted. So I don't know whether it can be, I don't know whether it's okay to write, have language that's that, um, with goals in mind rather than real specific structures or the specific configuration of the, of the street. Um, I don't know if that's, if that's okay i- in the recommendation or if we should have something that's more specific.
I think that's totally up to you and ultimately the city council. I, it is, it is my professional opinion that there is no professionally correct answer about the best way to calm that traffic. I think that you would find experts who would say either that a traffic circle or a jog is going to be more effective between those two. There's also necking down of streets that is making them, um, intentionally narrow in certain parts. Um, so that traffic is forced to slow down. You can remove parking lanes on, or, you know, parking areas on streets so that they're narrower. That creates a feeling of being able to drive more slow, needing to drive more slowly. And we can certainly leave it open in the general plan and put that goal statement in so that if and when the city goes to design it, they would follow that guidance and decide at that time if there is a, a best idea. So, um, again, Commissioner Stevens, I don't know if you want to make a specific proposal for consideration by the commission, but um, I'd be happy to implement through the general plan, I'd be happy for the general plan to say traffic circle or to say only a jog or to say something to calm the traffic to be studied later, for example, a traffic circle or a jog. I think any of those three things would be fine.
Well, certainly I'd like to hear from the other commissioners if they have a, a preference, but I think that I don't have a preference and I would, I would certainly would rather leave that up to people who have more expertise in that area and then to offer other, um, options, if there are other options, and especially if it's something that may happen later in the future, there may be something that comes up later that may be like a new design or some other, uh, new way of doing it that we hadn't thought of right now. So I kind of like the idea of having the goal in place, but I would, I would love to hear from the other commissioners about.
I, I recall that conversation and it was Carol Johnson who brought it up with concerns of if there wasn't a jog and it was a thoroughfare through that residential area, she thought that would be, uh, have too much impact on the, 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 uh, higher density, uh, residential area that it would have to go through to connect to Fairview. I, I, I just, uh, I know we have a couple of ideas on how to calm the traffic there. I think it's important that we do connect Meridian to Fairview. I think that's important, um, but I, I, I agree with the impacts of, if it's done right, there should be a, a traffic calming measure, perhaps, uh, Kim Lee Horn can, can weigh in on, on the strategy there.
I will, okay, so I think the guidance, unless we hear otherwise, I think the guidance we'll take into account is we will ask Kim Lee Horn. And I'm, I personally, I have a preference to call out either a jog or a traffic circle as a possibility and to clearly articulate the goal. So unless Kim Lee Horn has a really compelling reason that we should only do one of those two or that we should call something out in particular, I think I'd like to follow, uh, Commissioner Stevens' suggestion that we call it out as either or a third thing if that's turns out to be better and that we clearly articulate that the goal is to calm the traffic as it moves on Meridian from the existing city out towards Fairview.
Very good, I, I'm.
I agree with that.
Good with that, yes.
So I'd like to ask staff to advance the slides again back to the master list. Thank you.
So on, on housing sites, uh, there was discussion in the memorandum, uh, regarding the housing, the calculation from gross to net and the problems of net, when you have net density, you, you minus out all of the roads and all that. It creates a more prohibitive, uh, measure, uh, of options that can be taken for a, more diverse housing types. So I'm totally, uh, in agreement with having gross density rather than net density for calculating um, housing in general, uh, for especially a multi-unit development. That, and it's number one. Going back to the public comment and hall, uh, with the fees for apartments as compared to fees for a single family. I think that's cer- certainly does make a lot of sense there. I think we really need to look at impact fees if we're trying to create more apartments, more rental housing, um, higher densities, I think we really need to, need to look at these impact fees for the apartments. And I think we need to revisit that because having the same impact fee for an apartment as compared to a single family home is, to me, is just, doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The impact fees are actually less for multifamily. Um, uh, we can get you the specific numbers. Uh, I think Anna was also referring to actually the construction of, of it right now because everything, construction prices, it's actually no secret that they have soared so high in the last year. It's, it's, um, right now, I think that was more of her ta- uh, comment that they're more, more in the construction aspect of it, but, but, um, there is, there is a different, uh, difference in regards to actual impact fees at, at this time for multifamily and, and single family.
So I, so with that said, um, Abraham, I just wanted to, um, just made a comment that the construction costs will, might change. I think we can expect that they will change after we get past this whole pandemic, cause I know a lot of it is just because of some of the shortages that happened during the pandemic. So I don't, I, I would prefer not to make a recommendation based on current situation, uh, because we know that this is going to be, uh, you know, twenty year plan. So we want, uh, so I want it to be more broad, um, and I, but, but, but I would like um, to kind of reiterate what Commissioner Roy said, that I think that we want, what I would like to see is a better understanding of how the fees are calculated for like per, uh, you know, per unit in a multi-unit structure and then versus, you know, what is it, what does it cost for a single family? And it should be some sort of, uh, it should be like a, a, a standard based on size or, or, I don't know, bedrooms maybe, I'm not sure. But I would like to just have a better understanding of how those fees, um, are calculated or how they, are they, how they, how they are set. And they should, there should be some standard that makes more sense so that it doesn't cost more per, uh, unit if you have an apartment versus a single family home.
And again, knowing that, uh, you know, we have, we're looking at a default, uh, density option of twenty units per acre to, to meet our regional housing assessment requirements. And I said, as I said this before, we're looking at the downtown, a hundred twenty-five units per acre. When we have five hundred square feet per open, a open space requirement per dwelling unit, how are you gonna do that? There's no way you can do that. So I know what, once we come up with a new general plan, then we're gonna look at the zoning code and that's gonna have to follow suit and realistic, be realistic regarding that. Anything else on housing types? No? And then the final one is inclusionary zoning and, uh, yeah, I mean, we need a leverage to get these affordable units, but then again, uh, it, it behooves us to have that feasibility study because it'll get to the point where if, if, it's nice to have a requirement like that, but if nothing's gonna be built because it becomes too encumbrant, then, then we have to reconsider and find other avenues to get that affordable units.
You know, I, I, I think, yeah, it's great that, you know, we're all, we're always thinking about affordable units. The one thing that, that, that is concerning to me, uh, cause I see it being in the mortgage lending business is there, there's a lot of people here in the city of Hollister that make too much money to qualify for, for affordable housing, but not enough to be able to purchase a market rate, uh, property house. So, you know, I, I think we really need to, to really, a- and, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, you know, uh, increase the affordable housing, the reserves, um, or at least offerings, but I think we really need to look at, at, at moderate income housing households because the, they're the ones that are stuck. They're the ones that are stuck renting houses, you know, basically paying off someone else's mortgage for them. Uh, and also they're the ones that are stuck in apartments. They make decent money for, you know, where they live, even though most of them work outside the city, but they just don't make enough to be able to, to, to qualify for that down payment. You know, and closing costs and those, those are the issues. There's not enough programs out there. And it's great that, that, that we're thinking about affordable housing, but same time, I think we, we really need to, to really look at that population of the city. Cause like I said, I, we constantly have to turn away, you know, and it, it's hurtful because they make decent money, you know, they make good money, but just, they just can't, you know, get that help from affordable housing, uh, loan programs, they just make too much, you know, and it's, it's just like it, it's tough because, you know, you, you, when you meet the kids and you meet the, the, the spouses and you just, you feel for them. But unfortunately, there's not enough programs for that, uh, population. Uh, but I think we, we really need to, to, to work on that as a city. That's, that's something that I would like to see a little bit more. You know, and, and see if we can maybe come up with, you know, uh, yeah, I know a long time ago, uh, I believe Hollister was involved in some of these uh, housing programs. Um, you know, I know times are different, but hopefully we can maybe get involved with, with offering something like this, um, you know, to help tho- those people out. Uh, you, you know, the, you know, the, 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 the quote unquote, American dream is to, you know, own a house with a white picket fence. Uh, obviously, you know, maybe we don't have fences for the most part, you know, around our property, but y- you know, unfortunately, not everyone is gonna be a, um, property owner. But I think we should do what we can, a little bit more for, for those moderate income households. You know, I, I think we need to focus on them just a little bit more, not necessarily take away from, um, affordable housing or low income homes, but we need to do a little bit more towards, uh, towards that population to get them. You know, cause they can make the mortgage payment. It's, it's mostly the down payment and closing costs because they pay pretty much a mortgage payment with the rent. So it's like, it's tough for them, you know, I feel for them, you know.
It's almost like it's, it's, it's a, a, an emerging new demographic here that we're talking about. I think it is. I think it is. And I know when we get into the housing element, you know, we really look at the demographics based on income and are we responding to to this demographic that Commissioner Moore is bringing up. And I've heard this before. You know, I've, I've heard, is it maybe a garden, the garden home? You know, uh, a possibility here for someone, the older people who want to downsize or the young couple who want to establish something, you know, and sell it in permanent in their lives.
No, exactly, you know, and the one thing that, that I want people to realize is, is, you know, with, with all the new homes being built, they're not all being purchased by people from outside of Hollister. Uh, you're seeing ho- longtime Hollister residents who are selling their properties, you know, because, you know, and, and, and they're able to afford to purchase some of these bigger, newer homes as well, cause there is a, a, uh, false infer- false belief that all of these new developments are being, solely being purchased by outsiders. Uh, that's not true. Um, uh, it, it's closer to probably maybe like sixty, forty. But there's a lot of longtime Hollister residents that are able to sell their, their homes because the values have gone up and be able to make a good profit and able to purchase some of these, these, these new developments. So, you know, um, you know, so I don't want everyone to think that's just outsiders that are purchasing these new homes.
If I, can I just, can I just jump in on this? So, um, I just wanna, I just wanna, um, clarify because I do think that, while Commissioner Mora is speaking to us, is an important thing for us to consider. I, my question is, is that, is that part of this, this section of G-PAC, inclusionary housing, cause inclusionary housing is, is an expectation that there is, that when there's a development that just a portion. an expectation that there is, that when there's a development, that just a portion of those houses are dedicated to moderate, to, you know, to very low income somewhere in that area. But if we're talking about programs that will help people that are struggling or that will incentivize like, you know, people to stay in Hollister rather than you have people from other cities come into live here, is this the area where that, is this the right part of the G-PAC plan that it would fall under or would it go somewhere else? Or is it even something that's city or is it county? And I'm just, I just want to ask that question because I do think it's important and I want to just ask if this is the right place for it.
I, I think the question's directed towards me and I'm not sure I know an answer. I, I will say that the intent of an, of an inclusionary program is to ensure that there are a certain number of housing units produced that are affordable to people in each of the income categories, very low, low, moderate, in addition to the market rate category or above moderate. It is definitely the case that not everyone can even afford a very low-income unit. Certainly not, you know, low, very low-income people also can't afford a low-income unit. Low-income people can't afford a moderate-income unit. So just having that supply doesn't meet everyone's needs. And some people are also quite surprised to find out how high the housing cost is, even though it officially qualifies as a very low or low-income unit. Some people just aren't used to paying that percentage of their income. It's, it's calculated generally at about 30% of the family income. And while some people unfortunately are paying much more than 30% of their income, others are paying much less. And for those people, if you're currently paying 15% or 20% of your income, say for a room in a house, and you discover that an apartment is going to cost you 30% of your income, that can seem like a big, a big increase and may not feel affordable. So there's a lot of different nuances there. It is, there are other housing programs that the city has and which the county engages in also. I imagine that Abraham and other staff can speak to those. And those aren't directly a part of the general plan at this part, point. They will be covered in your housing element, which will be prepared after this process, probably in 2022 and 23. And you could talk about those other housing programs at that time.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
I think that, the, the, going back to the, the goal of, of the housing types, the way I, I like to see it is for the stability of neighborhoods. You know, to have these choices. It, it really is, it, it builds strength in towns and cities when you have stable neighborhoods. And that's based on having these housing types and choices for your, your children so they don't have to go off to Portland, Oregon like my daughter did. Don't want to talk about that.
Or Sacramento like our son did.
Yeah, so any other comments on the inclusionary zoning?
Well, to Commissioner Mora's point, there is a new class of people. I have people that work for me that make $29 an hour and they're looking to buy a house. And they're asking me, like, I thought I was middle-class. I didn't realize I was poor, but not poor-poor. So now there's a new, there's poor-poor, they can't afford anything. Then there's the poor that can rent a house or rent an apartment for the cost of a mortgage. But then the middle class has slowly faded out. I mean, we got lucky, we bought our house right after the recession. And I pay less for a mortgage than my daughter pays for her one-bedroom apartment in Salinas because she couldn't find anything here. And my other daughter was lucky enough to buy a house, but she had to go all the way to Los Banos. So I think there needs to be a little more thought to that, to keep the original citizens in town. I'm not an original citizen, like, I came from Salinas. But having lived here for almost 20 years, there's no way I'll ever sell my house to go back to Salinas.
Yeah.
Even though it's a little cheaper, believe it or not, than being here. You would think it would be more expensive in Salinas, unless you live on the east side, which is dirt cheap. But, yeah, we have to keep that in mind, I think.
Well, thank you, Jose.
And if I could, I'd just like to add for the commission also that I, I feel like I should apologize that we use these terms that are legal terms of very low income, low income and moderate income. And I think they do have sometimes a stigma with them. As Commissioner Moore just said, someone might feel like, oh, I, I didn't know I was considered low-income and I don't want to be considered low-income. And that makes total sense. For that reason, some communities use the term workforce housing instead of talking about very low or low-income units. And that's very appropriate to do because it perhaps avoids some of the stigma. And yet, when, when we go to look at the legal definitions and how it works with the state of California and with housing law, there are these four categories. And so I, I do feel badly that we end up calling people very low-income or low-income and that maybe has some stigma with it. And we certainly don't mean that. We're really strictly trying to talk about where they qualify within a set of state guidelines.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
I think it's, I think it's important to stick, to stick with those same terms because I think it gets really confusing. But I do think that we have to be really clear that they're based on the, the market rate. So it's, you know, whatever percentage it is of the market rate, it means that it's low-income or very low-income. And I think we have to be clear about that, but I think when we start to name them different things and it gets really confusing. But, but I do agree that it is confusing and it does feel weird when people think they're middle-class and then really they're, when it's, you know, low-income housing, they qualify for that. But I do think that when we speak about as it compares to market-rate housing, then it makes more sense.
Okay, I think that concludes our discussion on these eight items. Are there any other items that my fellow commissioners would care to discuss? Any comments on any of the other 15 for this evening?
Well, the only one I would, I would add on to the one talking about making 23 and 20 combined. It makes a lot of sense. Can't remember who made that point, but it's, that's a good point.
That was Joe Werble that made that comment. Werble. That's interesting. He also mentioned an art center with a library, importance of having a library. And, and I, going to that, and I, I know this is, that 23 Arts and Culture, what I find really most intriguing about the recommendations within that category is a cultural arts district. I, and the only question is, are we big enough for that? But we have a lot of talented artists in our, in the community here that would be more than happy to express themselves in a, in a venue that would be well-designed and almost a, a point of destination that would, would help draw people there and it'd be good for all involved.
Could we real quickly go to slide 41, please? This is something I forgot to bring up when we were talking about inclusionary housing. I'm just curious, since we do, you know, since we do have some G-PAC members here as well as Placeworks, I'm just curious as to the reasoning behind of G-PAC recommendation number two that says, "Do not allow alternative compliance to the inclusionary housing program for for-sale projects such as payment of an in-lu housing fee, land dedication, or allowing the off-site construction of affordable units." Just curious as to what the reasoning is behind that recommendation.
As, as I recall, Abraham, and you can correct me if I'm, I'm off the path here, is that the problem, there was some discussion about in-lu fees, is that they, it doesn't really work. Those fees that collected don't really go to what they're designated for. That, I, that didn't come from me, but.
Yeah, and I think, I think, like, what I'm remembering about our discussion around that is that we just want it to be as, wanted to be, like, stick to the expectation and not allow for any, like, flexibility around that as much as we possibly could so that we really did have every development have a portion of the housing dedicated to some of the, the lower-priced homes. We didn't want there to be like a way to get around those fees and then to have some developments that had, that had no affordable housing and then others that maybe did. And I think that was really the goal, was to just keep that expectation for every development whenever possible.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Absolutely, I, I agree with, to answer your question, I agree with, with both statements. I, I also concur that that's what I recollect. And, and to add to that also, my recollection also is that G-PAC and members of the community's comments were that really these developments should, should stay where, where it's at. There was concerns that in a, in a new fee would be collected for, to be able to have that, create that affordable housing elsewhere, that, that it would be focused on a certain area of town away from, you know, wherever the development was occurring.
Right.
And there's concerns that there would be an over-concentration of affordable housing in just one particular area as opposed to be part of the actual development mixed throughout.
Very good, yes, that brings back my memory on that too. Thank you, Abraham.
You're welcome.
Good, then well, thank you for that explanation. Just wanted to make sure that people understand like why that was recommended, you know. Again, I, I don't want the stigma to be that, you know, affordable housing units are always bring a bad element to the community, so.
It's important.
And I, so I just want to make sure, because I know a lot of, I've heard from community members in the past that they, they were concerned that they were only, affordable housing units were only in part of, of one city, which, you know, a homeowner, you know, if they're, it just say they all happen to be in the west side of town, they, they would be concerned that, that they could potentially bring down the property value of their, their home. So I think we need to spread them out throughout the city because then, because then what, and what happens too is we ensure that, that potentially economically disadvantaged families as kids get, get, you know, are able to get good, get into good schools, you know, even though you, you know, instead of just being all focused at, at one, one school site. So I think it's good that, you know, we're, we're kind of getting everybody spread out throughout the city. And, you know, there's good things that come about it as well, you know, a, a lot of positive things instead of just being on one spot, you know, like a lot of large cities, unfortunately, in the past, that's what they've done. You know, drive through certain parts of Chicago, Illinois, and it's like, okay, you see that it, it doesn't get better. So it's good that they do spread it out. So I just wanted to make sure that was a good, that people understood why that recommendation was there.
Yeah, and I totally agree. And we did have discussion regarding that. It should be workforce housing should be part of the overall fabric of our community. It shouldn't be sequestered in one area. And we'd be very mindful regarding that.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the commission on any of the items?
I just wanted to make one quick comment about the, the question about the historic and cultural resources and then the arts and cultural sections. And I, and I, and I had a similar comment initially when we were starting the discussion in those areas, that maybe they should be put together and why were they separated or what was the difference? And I, and, and I'm just, this is very simplistic, so I, so I may be completely oversimplifying this explanation, but I think that the reason that they were separated is that one is really around preserving some of the, the gems that are out there, the assets that we have that are both historical and cultural in nature. And then the other is really around lifting up new opportunities for all arts and culture, including events and other types of artistic endeavors. So I think that was why they were separated because there really is an effort around preservation as opposed to the other one where it's more about, you know, developing other arts and cultural experiences for our city. So I mean, super oversimplifying it, but that was sort of my understanding of why they were separated.
Good, good, well-stated. I, I agree, one is bringing in a new and the other one is preserving what we have. Whereas the arts and culture, we're looking at lifting it up and reviving it.
Yeah.
And creating new opportunities. And the other one is looking at the assets that we have and finding ways to preserve them. Including, and I, I just wanted to say this, is that the, it was important policy recommendation for our cultural, historic and cultural assets is to create a new historic resources commission. And I think that would be most important. So any other comments or questions on?
Oh, I, I like the fact that, that the planning, that, that roundabouts is, is being discussed and proposed, you know, hopefully. Hopefully we do a better job compared to Caltrans, of the location of those roundabouts. I don't care for the, the, the proposal of 25, 156, but I do actually support within the city limits, some, some roundabouts do make sense. I've visited a couple of cities, just not, just by chance, and that they happen to have roundabouts there. And just kind of changed my opinion on, on roundabouts a little bit, so.
When you go to Scotland in England, you'll see a lot of them there, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, David, I think you have our direction and the comments based on those eight and some of the other ones.
Absolutely, this has been a great discussion and I am very glad you got through all eight of the items and that you also have looked at the other 16. And you've given us some guidance on a few of those as well. So this has been a very productive meeting for us. Just to let you all know next steps, and I, I think we've talked about this a little bit, we've, we will take all your feedback and incorporate it into these recommendations so that the, the total recommendations include everything you've talked about this evening. And that will be moved forward to the city council meeting that will be on, on January 22nd.
Well, hopefully we can attend in person.
I'm sorry, June, June 29th.
Won't be wearing a mask maybe, I don't know. But I, I really want to thank you, David, and, and Placeworks. A monumental task that you're undertaking there that, and very meaningful to all of us. And you have many that are participating in this and making good progress. We've got, got a ways to go, but we're, we're getting there. So thanks, thanks again. And without any other comments from the planning commissioner reports or anything, I, I ask for a motion for adjournment.
And I make a motion that we adjourned.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thanks again.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, everyone, see you next time.
Good night, Commissioner Stevens.
The recording has stopped.